There we go, now we go. Okay, good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for February 9th, 2021, 10:00 a.m. No public testimony during this review session. We are going to recall a case that was on yesterday's calendar, a decision item, item number 7, 38985BZ, 2090 Bronxdale Avenue, The Bronx.
Okay, thank you. So with that one, we deferred last, yesterday, because I hadn't seen the planting bed detail. We've been going back and forth at the agency with staff to try to get a planting bed detail, and I hadn't seen that there was a submission, I don't know, late Friday or something, of the detail, which is not perfect, but it's close enough now. You know, we subsequently seen much better details submitted by landscape architects, but this is, this will do for now. So therefore, I would like to make a motion to grant on condition, the condition being that the owner has represented that the asphalt will be seal-coated in the spring in conjunction with the installation of the planting. And yes, so that's the condition, that they have to seal coat the asphalt entirely in conjunction with the planting, okay? So on that motion, a motion to grant.
Chair Palmetto?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Applications are granted, thank you. Okay, this is review session for February 9th cases. First item is appeals calendar, new cases, item number 22, 2018-188A to 2018-189A, 19428 and 19432, Dunton Avenue, Queens.
So that's the question, is 188 or 184? It should be 188, right, to 189?
Yep. The folder says 184.
Well, what happened is, there originally was six homes proposed, and then they removed the other four, so there's only two homes on Dunton. That works, that's before us, well technically before us.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, that's why, so, but the correct call out is 188A and 189A, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I have.
All right, so we have...
Anybody has anything?
No, I mean, we just want to make sure. So if we could make sure that's corrected in the SharePoint, on the lineup?
On the lineup, it's 188 and 189. I think it's, in the SharePoint, it's a stretched one with the original six numbers or something.
No, I want to, I want to correct it, because we're all looking at those two, right? So share, the lineup there should be correct, and infusion, it should be correct, so we don't carry this forward on and on, okay? So, we have proof of service and a notice of hearing to officials. The community board recommendation is in the April 27 folder. It wasn't pulled out into its own community board, so folder. They voted in 2019 to disapprove, but I actually didn't find the minutes that they refer to in their cover sheet. They say, please find the attached minutes, and I didn't find them. This looking, okay, this may go back to the strange PDF that we're looking at under the old, whatever, Adobe system. We, I'm going to mute you, Chief Daley. This community board recommendation, I'm sorry. We received about 45 letters, and maybe more, but I kind of maybe lost count, 45 letters in strong opposition to the project, including two very detailed letters from the Holliswood Civic Association, all citing existing out-of-character construction related to the project, illegal construction and poor site management, and neighborhood congestion and traffic. That seems to be related to the much larger development that is in process, where there was a hospital that is currently not being renovated, or maybe it is being renovated, it's really not clear, and other houses, many other houses that are being developed on the site. So they seem just generally the objecting to the larger development. I just want to say that the, probably everyone saw this, because the application materials are quite confusing, because the site has had a long history before the board was filed in late 2018 for more houses than is before us today, for both GCL 36 and 35 waivers. But the current submission is one house on Lot 160 that's located clearly in the bed of Map Clover Place. But, and then there's an application also for Lot 61, which is just adjacent to that, but I don't actually understand why that's before us, because according to the site plan, the house isn't even sitting in the bed of the map street. It may be that the site plan is not precise enough, so they need to give us a better drawing on the site plan to indicate where the widening line is relative to the house, because I just don't think it's, it's sitting in the bed, therefore, I'm not sure what we're waiving. Dunton Avenue, on which the two sites front, appear to be mapped based on the Borough President's topo map, so there is no GCL 36 waiver needed. So the two houses, as I said, are part of a much larger development with 15 new two-family houses being developed as of right, presumably because Dunton is a map street, and they sit on the site of a formal hospital. It seems to me that the community is having a lot of difficulty with the development, but I'm not sure that they understand that the BSA is not involved in the development's approval. Our work is strictly related to the two houses proposed for lots 160 and 61, which as far as I can tell comply with all of the zoning regulations. So to the extent that members of the community are listening to our hearings and attend our hearings, I think they may misunderstand we're not about subdivision approval, as long as the project complies with zoning. The question is, can the houses sit within the bed of a map street that is not being used? Is not being approved by DOT. So we have a DOT non-capital improvement letter, we have a street status letter from Borough President's Office, and DEP had comments as of 2019, which I didn't see responded to. They need to respond to the...
So, DEP, DEP had sent an email this morning, because I was trying to follow up with them to, so they, and I forward this to the applicant, they want a copy of the existing easement that crosses the property. DEP's legal will need to review and ensure that any decision made in this process will not contradict the existing easement that crosses the above referenced property.
Okay.
So that was this morning, and I emailed it to you this morning. Also, just on DOT, they're taking another look at it, because the prior thing was older, and now the properties, the thing has changed.
Okay.
So they just may want to, they're going to make comments on the two homes.
Okay. Okay. Um, okay, so, all right. Okay, so we don't actually have those sign-offs, in part because these letters are so old, two years ago, basically.
Yeah, we let it sit for a while, and then, yeah.
Yeah, so it sat for a while, because it sounds like they withdrew a part of the application. I, it's hard to know what the real, the letter from DEP is from January 2019. So really, that's it, you know? As far as I can tell, the houses comply with zoning, as long as DOT is okay with locating the house on 160 in the bed of Clover, what's it called, Clover Place? Then there's really nothing else that we do, right? It doesn't seem like it's blocking off any, there have been times where we look at the proposal and we say, oh, what this would be blocking off a really important link to a street. Maybe, maybe DOT will now consider that it's doing that, because Clover Place accesses Dunton Avenue, which is arguably something you would want to access from Clover Hill Drive, but maybe not, so that's really a DOT call. So then I'll go to Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you. Yeah, I did have difficulty reviewing this application, this application, especially trying to figure out what was before us. And, you know, when I looked at the map that was submitted, and I'm looking at the map that, a plan map that was in our file from 4/27/2020, it seems lots, Lot 61, portion of it is within the map street bed.
Right.
But that's not as clearly shown up in the survey, but that's what's showing up in the plan. So it, I agree with you, it would be helpful to get a clarification from the survey, and the, and based on the survey, if the drawing needs to be revised, it should be reflected. But otherwise, I really did not have any comments on this project.
So what I was talking about is, it seems on the site plan, the little site plan, that Lot 60 has, 61, has a teeny piece of its property sitting in the bed, but the house is pulled away. So the house isn't sitting in the bed of the street. It would be like the lawn in the bed of the street. And normally, you don't need a GCL 35 lawn, right? So maybe in Queens, they're having an issue at the, you know, we've had like weird differences, where in some boroughs, they say, oh, but you want to put a garden path, and it's sitting there in the middle of the street. You need to get a GCL 35. And other ones are like, you can have a driveway in the middle of the street as long as your house isn't in the middle of the street. So I don't know what DOB's view on it.
Yeah, I thought it was because of the easement also, that they had triggered it, so that, but again, it would be helpful to get a complete clarification on it, and that way we understand how the procedure happens in Queens going forward. We also are better educated in this manner.
Yes, agreed, okay.
Thank you.
Just one second. Okay. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I have like, not too much. The only thing I would say is, if you look at the two pilot plans, the small plans for the entire development, next to the, like, the site plan for each house, I would say just add a dimension to show how much overlap between the proposed property, that proposed house, property lines, and the outline for the street, so we can understand how much of the property is sitting on that map street. So, and make that consistent with the survey. So that would be like, like, much helpful than putting it the way it's put right now.
Right. Anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
Commissioner?
While I understand the, well, actually, I'm not exactly on, I'm not sure what, what is so terrible about this project and for the community. I understand that they used, that they, that generally speaking, the lot sizes, it's, they're, are larger, and like Chair said, we don't have anything to do with that. The GCL 35 statute is quite clear. So we're really limited in the kind of relief that they're requesting. But I'm not sure that's anything that we can do about that. I wait to see what, what, what the other sister agencies provide us.
Okay, thank you. Now, I was thinking, thinking, one of the complaints of the community is that the developer has been a bad actor, and the site's been badly maintained, and all of that kind of thing that we're very used to seeing. Normally, that's a, that's sort of the job of the local council member and the community board to intervene in situations like that. And the only times that we can intervene is when it has to do with active construction that we're involved in, in a project that's already received some kind of approval from us, or it's a vesting application or something like that, where we can then call in DOB and so on. It doesn't sound like on these two particular sites, there's any cause for that. So, and we're limited to these two sites. Okay.
Sorry, next case?
Yeah.
Item number 23, 202049A, 38-3028 Street, Queens. I know we usually don't, I know we usually don't accept, so the applicant emailed revised statement of facts, and I emailed it to everyone. I know, I told him he couldn't, you won't get a chance to review it, and that they have a TCO as of December 15th.
Okay. We have proof of service of initial application and a notice of hearing to officials. I didn't find a community board recommendation, is there one?
It's not my case, I'm sorry.
Yeah, whose case is this one?
Vinroy.
Vinroy, did you find a community board recommendation? I didn't find one.
I think it's there, I'm going to, I'm going to take a second look.
Okay.
I couldn't find it either.
All right, I'll take a second look and let you know.
Okay, thanks, Vinroy. Have a TCO as of when, December?
December 15th, 2020.
All right. Okay, the, this application first came to the BSA for common law vested rights in 2012, with an extension granted in 2014, and again in 2017, to complete construction and obtain a CO. The applicant states that between 2017 and the present, construction was completed, but a CO has not yet been obtained. But now it's, now we have a TCO, so is this a moot application? Maybe I'm not. If they have a TCO...
They're seeking, or I'm sorry, they're seeking, because I read the statement, they're seeking a retroactive grant from October 7th, 2018, to December 15th, 2020.
Retroactive from, second? Unmute, unmute yourself, you muted yourself.
Oops, from December, from October 7th, 2018, to December 15th, 2020.
To, okay. Why do they need that?
I don't know, because if they got a TCO, it sounds like DOB is not holding them up over not having our extension.
Right, is the TCO... No, but if it's going to, is it going to go to permanent anyway? And, you know, when they clear up whatever building issues are? Or it won't go to permanent until they hear from us, like?
It could be that, it could be that they need to belt and suspenders themselves.
Yeah, okay.
But the timeframe is 2018 to 2020, October 7th.
That's what I said.
Yeah, that's 2020, I'm sorry.
No.
10/7/18 to 12/15/20. So, but then, so the question is, if DOB was basically overlooking the fact that they didn't have this extension of time, right? What are we doing here?
Exactly.
So I'll read my comments, but I'm not sure what we're doing here. Maybe the applicant needs to explain. And, and you know, some of it was, I was even going to, it's sort of a way of complimenting our project manager and advising the applicant to please always listen to the project manager when they ask you to do something. So in December, our project manager, that was Vinroy Bell, asked for information about expenditures incurred prior to and since the last extension grant in 2017. Is, it is customary for this board to be asked by the applicant to take judicial notice of submissions made that were, that led up to the prior grants, but also to be provided with information about expenditures incurred since. So this information goes to the Putnam Armec test, and also completes our record. The applicant should note that the 2017 resolution included the following recital, even though that 2017 grant was an extension of time to complete under the two prior vesting grants, just like this application is, if it's still an existing application. And I'm reading from the resolution. Whereas, at the board's request, the applicant provided photographs of the site and further information indicating the alteration permit has not lapsed, canceled checks for costs incurred since the board's prior extension of time, updated total costs, information as to the serious loss the applicant would face, should the time to complete construction not be extended, and an explanation as to why a two-year extension is being sought. So you can see from the application history, that's a standard request. So when our project manager asks you for something, it speeds up the application review process in hearing. If you simply listen to them, they actually know what they're doing. Please, all right. So thank you, Vinroy, for bringing that up. Applicant, so I just want to say that. And so I'd like also an update on the status of the project and CO application, and we just talked about that. So now we have to figure out, if it's a TCO, what are the outstanding items that are holding up, getting a permanent? And is our approval one of them? If not, have a nice day. Okay. Commissioner Shonda?
No comments.
Okay, Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I fully agree with you, like, what are they doing here? But just for the record, and this is really going forward for other cases, I agree with you, what the project manager asked for, it's very straightforward. Substantial work completed, substantial money expended, and serious loss. All of those figures should be updated. I shouldn't have to go read the resolution to find that information out. So just to put the applicant on notice in the future, this is the kind of things that they need to include in this type of an application.
Okay, great. All right, Commissioner Sheta. Oh, and Vinroy has his hand up, we'll jump to him, go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner, in an email, we, I did ask for community board recommendation. So it was, an email was sent asking for that. We don't, we didn't get that.
Okay, didn't get it, okay, thank you, Vinroy. Okay, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. We need some interior photos, like justifying the construction status for the interior. This is the fittest comment. The second comment is actually, I am asking them to proofread these statements of facts. I understand that they submitted like an updated one, but the one that submitted contradicts itself. On page two, paragraph three, it says that construction was completed July 2019. And then on page three, second paragraph, it says the owner completed the construction of this eight-story building in 2017. So is it 2017 or 90? Just, just please, after you write something, read it, so you do not confuse us, thank you.
Seems basic, right? Okay.
It does.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further from me. I'm sure the applicant will enlighten us as to his reason as well as here, and I look forward to hearing.
Okay. All right.
Zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number 24, 20164463BZ, 620214th Avenue, Brooklyn.
Oh, here we go. Um, so I'm still struggling with the 7319 threshold question. As we know, school is a defined term in Section 1210, and states, as everyone knows, that a school is an institution providing full-time day instruction and a course of study that meets the requirements of Section 3204, 3205, and 3210 of the New York State Education Law. And the reason that I'm asking this question over and over in this case is it's very unusual that the school isn't providing us with anything to establish that itself is a school. Only the lawyer is providing its own sort of synopsis of what the school does, and that seems quite odd to me. It should be coming from the school as we usually get. We usually get like a school charter that shows exactly what its course of instruction is. We get brochures, we get all kinds of things that indicate what kind of a school it is and what its pedagogy is. The, so what we were given, other than the write-up from the lawyer, is a beds and a sorus number, which by the way, are not proof that this is a 1210 school. A beds number is actually about the building facility. It asks, you know, do you have the right egress? Are your corridors wide enough? Do you have fire extinguishers? Those are the kinds of things that ask, not what your course of construction of instruction is. And there's also what is a carefully worded letter from the New York State Education Department, decidedly avoiding the direct question. It's a, it says, yeah. So there was a, there was a carefully worded letter, which I won't read, but it avoids the actual direct question. And I know, for example, that the class schedule lists, among other things, science and advanced science in the high school levels. It's a high school level science class, right? But there's no science lab on any of the drawings. So how are you teaching advanced science without a science lab? And in our many school applications, as I said, we receive actual curriculum, not just a room chart about how rooms are being used. And we discussed this at the prior hearings. I understand that the New York City Department of Education was conducting inspections of schools where the curriculum is potentially not satisfying 3204 equivalency standards. So I wonder, maybe this school has a, has a report on the curriculum? Maybe the Department of Education, New York City Department of Education, has a report that would work in this case. So, so at the moment, I'm not seeing it, and it's, yeah, I'm not seeing establishment of the 1210 school. So if this is not a 1210 school for 7319 special permit purposes, the question is, is it entitled to educational deference under the Cornell Doctrine as a school? Or is it rather a religious institution? I don't know the answer to that, and I would like, if you're, if we're going to have to switch to a full variance or a use, then applicant's counsel needs to brief the judiciary's case law on the Cornell Doctrine for religious schools, institutions that teach, right? Religious doctrine. And if it is entitled to deference and not a 7319 school, the application, as I say, has to be amended to reflect the use waiver in an M district. There is now also, with respect to the 7319, a one-page letter from a broker who states that they looked at 219 sites in the Catchman area, including sites of only 1,500 to 6,000 square feet, even though the criteria was a first site that could handle a 70,000-square-foot building, and they didn't find anything as of right. No list of sites were provided, nothing at all. And so it seems to me we're nowhere with respect to that threshold question also. So I'm feeling this is not a 7319 application, and you're going to have to go with, yeah, with an entire variance on this, and I need more on the deference question under Cornell. Is it education, or is it a religious institution? The extent of, so now I'm just going to the, to the drawings. The extent of the vaults has been reduced, and there is a claim that DOT usually grants waivers where vaults are closer than seven feet to tree pits. I would want to see that waiver in advance, since I personally am not okay with this proximity, and which, where some of the vaults are as close as two feet to the tree pits. And I don't understand why this applicant wants to use city land when they have such a big building, and we talked about that before. Why not just put all of your equipment rooms inside your own building instead of imposing on city streets where we desperately need surviving trees? This is actually a request to double the FAR, so there should be enough room to put your utility vaults inside the building. Also, the interior lot fronting on 62nd Street is providing only a 25-foot rear yard that backs up to a four-story multiple dwelling that backs up to a four-story, um, multiple dwelling that's located in the R5B. And I don't see why we should permit that encroachment on their property. It's five feet, um, into residential, say, enjoyment. And I think they could amend the drawings for five feet and comply with that rear yard requirement. It's only a small portion of the building. Um, a trash compactor is proposed. I'd like to know if that's in lieu of refrigerated trash storage. Um, I would need to see specs on how it deals with perishables, since I've seen plenty of trash compactor containers that just sit there leaking into the sidewalks, because it compacts the trash. But when you have milk cartons and other kinds of leaks, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have drainage, it doesn't, um, it doesn't deal with it. It just sort of leaks onto the street. So, um, I'm not sure that that's the complete solution. Um, I think they do need refrigerated trash storage in addition to the compactor. Um, with this many students, I'm sure they need a compactor. There are open environmental issues at, um, with DOT and school safety and location for bus parking, which we said you need to find a permanent location to park the buses on off-street. Um, and I just want to say that, you know, this particular UTA group has so many schools with so many buses that, that they keep parking on these vacant lots, and then the vacant lots end up becoming, um, school sites. And what they really should be doing is developing a bus parking terminal. Just take one of those vacant sites and create a bus parking terminal. Then you wouldn't have to keep doing this with scattered onsite parking, where all the buses end up moving to the street when no one's looking, kind of when, you know, you don't realize that it's now developed as a school and you just lost your parking location for the off-street buses. Um, and especially in M districts, like this site would have been a perfect site for, um, the bus parking terminal, because it's in an M district where it'd be permitted as of right. Also, did then, I wonder whether the noise study, and that's something I'd just like Tracy to look at, considered the effect of the rooftop playground and the first floor playground. I'm not, don't remember whether it did. So, and they should provide details on the appearance of the steel fence and wall at the first floor playground, which will be visible from the rear yard of the residential building. So there's that one residential building that's kind of taking the, sort of the brunt of this very tall building, which otherwise kind of works in the neighborhood, given other adjacencies. But there's that one multiple dwelling that backs up to it. And, um, those were my new comments. Okay, Vice Chair Shonda.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, I will pick up from where you have left off. I agree with you with regards to the difference of, uh, of the school, but, um, and, and meeting that basic threshold. And also the letter with regards to alternate site was not satisfactory. We, you know, I, I mean, if the applicant is not familiar with what we look for, we can give a sample. But I think this applicant has done some cases like this, so it should not be new. But just to be on the safe side, we can provide it, uh, if that's what has been, uh, been difficult for him to generate. You know, with regards to the as-of-right development, and I was looking at the proposal and what we in the past have granted uh, uh, in situations like this, cases and others. I have less of an issue with the waivers of the side yard and the rear yard um, as I look at, at the programmatic layout need. You know, that they, uh, and, and typical consistently what we have granted in other projects of this nature. You know, I know in, in the past, we had said, why, why isn't the ground floor being built to the full lot line and, uh, and maximize the lot area? But I think in this case, that was not being done. A, to provide a somewhat of a relief from the residential, provide a backyard play area for the toddlers, and also to maximize, uh, school, uh, classrooms with light and air, which would not have been possible if, uh, it would, if it was built to the lot lines. And I know recently we have reviewed a case where, or, or it is in the process of being reviewed, where we do have along the side yard and the rear yard, uh, abutting residences, uh, a toddler's play area. So I, I think as long as there is a high wall that is very acoustically sealed, and, uh, I would be okay with it. And again, um, this is, as you mentioned, a note to DEP if they have reviewed the noise analysis for the rear yard, uh, play area and for the rooftop play area. I think the applicant should clarify these reasons in the as-of-right as to why, even in the as-of-right, you know, uh, not in the as-of, I'm sorry, in the proposed, why that is not being done.
Sorry, I, I'm miss, I'm, I'm lost. Why what hasn't been done?
Why it is not being built to the full lot line on the ground floor, I'm sorry. I think that explanation.
Why it hasn't.
Right, yeah, sorry, that's what I meant. Now, I do have questions with regards to the lunch slash gym room and the auditorium. So the lunch and the gym, uh, is located in the cellar, which will be used for lunch till 2:35 PM. And only after that, it will be used for gym. And after that, the school care, school uses or would use it, uh, for after-school activities. The proposed auditorium capacity is, uh, for 526 people. Uh, the lunchroom capacity is for, uh, is, um, is for 642, uh, as, as a gym or, uh, sorry, it's 625 and 325. It's like if you break it up into, um, if you break it up into, if you use it entirely, uh, the entire site is 620, uh, 42. If you use it partially, it's 322 each portion. So with the projected enrollment of, um, 1,285 students and the use of lunch and gym room for after-school program, used simult- simultaneously with the auditorium. I think the proposed auditorium, uh, with 526, uh, capacity can be reduced, and this will also further reduce, uh, some of the waiver requirements. The, the proposed schedule for home economics and computer rooms, um, it's not very clear to me from the scheduling chart, uh, moving on to the next one, which is proposed school.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to take notes, and as I take notes, I don't really understand what you said.
So, sorry, I'm, I, this is like, this is what happens when you review the whole day and then like you're reading the notes.
Yeah, and your brain is melted from yesterday.
So my first set of comments was with regards to the lunch and the gym room and the auditorium, why the auditorium space is so big when the lunch and the gym room is also serving the purpose, not just as a lunch and a gym room, and also auditorium after hours. And auditorium is also going to be used for gym and, uh, and, and, uh, after-hours activities. There is no reason for so much of, uh, space for the auditorium, and that can be reduced. Or the lunchroom or the gym can be reduced, and you can bring the utility room within the footprint of the building and not have to use the vault. It's a combination of, and combination of any one of those things to reduce the degree of the asks.
Okay, got it.
Okay, the next part is, uh, the proposed schedule that has been submitted for the home ec, uh, home economics and computer room, it's not clear. It says that from 12:45 PM to 1:30 PM every Monday and Wednesday, grade 7B will be attending home economics and also the computer class at the same time, which is not feasible. So I think something is wrong in those charts, and that needs to be corrected or explained. And also, not all the sections are attending the same set of, same grade, but 7A is attending home ec and computer, but 7B is not attending all of them. So there are all these differences, and that also goes to the question of the basic, what is the tenant of the school? And, and that is not coming through even from these classroom breakdowns and operations. But that's about it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sorry.
Sorry, I, I am sorry, I'm sorry too. I, generally, I review the notes before the hearing so that I know what I was thinking, but I did not have the time to do that.
Understood, understood, this has been a rough hearing two days. Okay, Commissioner Natalie Brown.
So I agree with you on the site search. I don't know how we can make it clearer. Stop backing into your letter by looking at an array of sites that no way are they available. It's, it's kind of getting tiring. It's, it's a very simple question. Go to a Realtor, have them say, oh, these five sites look like they could fit your parameters. Let's go see if they accommodate you, just like if I was going to a Realtor and saying, I need a three-bedroom apartment. You don't give me a listing of every single three-bedroom apartment that exists. You give me what's for sale or what's for rent. Same thing here, it's very simple. But we keep getting the same thing back from this applicant on this case. And the applicant rep gives us this type of a letter on other cases, and we have to keep counseling them. Stop giving us an inventory of everything that you know about, and just give us what's actually available for rent or sale. Very simple. And, um, we're still waiting for the safety of walkers. I keep reading through the paperwork, and it keeps saying the same thing, that these young people who are in this neighborhood are in this neighborhood anyway and will be walking around, whether or not they're walking to this school or walking to another school. And so we'll give you that information later. And, and it's not that difficult to sit and have an operational meeting with the people who run this school and say, hey, how have you handled walkers in other situations? And how are we going to handle it here? Very simple, I don't understand what's taking so long. Those are my two comments, I'm starting to get frustrated.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sheta. You're muted, you're muted, you're muted, you're muted.
Yep, I got it, I got it. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, my brain is melting, I, I have like too much comments. Not in this one, don't be scared, not in this one. I, I don't have too much to add. The only thing is, I, I agree with you Chair, that the walls, uh, do not need to be located in, on a city, city property. They could be located inside the building. Yeah, it's going to be some, some odds within the space, but this is, this is a very vast, uh, cellar space, so they could locate these vaults like, uh, within that area. Other, other than that, I, I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you Chair, I was, uh, I was a bit surprised by this, uh, this submission, because generally from this, um, applicant's counsel, we receive, uh, responsive submissions. We've made all these statements in October, we made the statements about, uh, from, from what we said in December, where we were concerned about the safety of the students, we were concerned about whether or not this meets a preliminary findings, whether or not this is a school. I'm beginning to feel that perhaps there isn't an adequate response to this question. And at this point, as Chair said, it might make most sense for them to revisit the type of application they're making. I have nothing, uh, my, the rest of my comments are repetitive.
Thank you. Thanks, alright.
Chair, do you, what, do you want me to speak on the noise?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I confirmed with the filing, the files, that the last noise study that was reviewed by DEP, um, it looked at both the play area moved to the ground level as well as the rooftop. And that's, that's what the sign-off, we got a few sign-offs, and we confirmed that with the last sign-off. And in terms of the DOT and school safety, I know there was a moratorium on, on traffic study for a while, and that was lifted, so they were going to, um, start their analysis at some point.
What, when was it lifted, recently, right, like?
It depends on each area, so I don't have the exact date for this area.
Okay. But I think the school's safety, that's a DOT question. Our question was really more operational, what, what are your plans, right? How are you going to take care of the kids when they're walking through this area? Okay, thank you. Next item, move on?
Yeah.
Next item is 2019, 25BZ, 40-48 Commercial Street, Brooklyn. Okay, the as-of-right and proposed projects have been revised to provide for inclusionary housing, which is an option in this area. It allows for an as-of-right residential floor area of 2.42 FAR provided only, that for every one foot of low-income floor area provided, the project can receive a 1.25 square foot bonus floor area to a maximum of 2.42 FAR. It is not calculated as a percentage of units as shown on the drawings. It's effectively a percentage of floor area in a, in a give-back. And so all of the assumptions on the drawings have to be corrected, because they're doing the wrong math on inclusionary housing bonus. If we were to grant a variance here based on that assumption, I would expect a restrictive declaration to commit to the amount of affordable floor area and units that are required by section 2390 of the zoning resolution. And if this is a generating site, in that the affordable units are being provided onsite, which then provides for the onsite floor area increase, if also permitted by the inclusionary housing program, and that's something I kind of can't remember. I used to work in that, and I've lost a little bit of the thread on that. If permitted by the inclusionary housing program, there is leftover or the right for any potential sale of those inclusionary housing credits to a compensated site that's off-site within the community board or adjacent to it, then it, that, that potential income must be included in the financial analysis or prohibited in, in the restrictive declaration, so that there's no double, triple, ultimately double or even triple dipping. Otherwise, the degree of waiver has to be compared to an as-of-right, non-inclusionary housing building with 2.2 FAR. And so therefore, the waiver would be greater, right? Um, they need to provide calculations for the actual, do the calculations for the inclusionary housing floor area and unit counts, and show compliance with the inclusionary housing program in terms of unit sizes and distribution in the building. So, you know, you can't just say it's an inclusionary housing project and then not show that it complies. The project size, uh, as submitted in this last submission, was reduced somewhat, but I don't know based on what, the cover letter doesn't say. They don't say, we came up with this number, this reduced number because we discovered something, or, uh, now we realize we can afford to do a project that's this much smaller because. The, the bubble drawings are fairly useless, since the list that they provided is only general, and the bubblers cover the entire drawings, um, the entire drawing, it's like the entire sheet is bubbled. And so I'm asking again, both to the applicants and to our project managers. Applicants, don't submit bubble drawings where you've bubbled the entire drawing, it's a useless exercise. You need to bubble only the things that have changed, um, and tag those bubbles with a little triangle that gives it a number, and then explain what that number stands for. And project managers, if you receive such a thing, that with the entire site, bump, the entire floor bubbled, reject the drawings right away. Don't, don't wait, please, I, because I keep seeing that over and over again, send the drawings back. The, the drawings indicate that a waiver for dormers is required, but the statement of facts doesn't mention that, which is correct. Um, I didn't actually figure out why you would need a dormer waiver, but, no. Um, because the building is in odd shape, and maybe they're taking advantage of the dormer rule with those odd shapes. There is still no response to the EAS's demand study indicating the need for six parking spaces, when only three are provided, they didn't respond in any way to that. The statement of fact still insists that the shape of the site drives the Um the statement of fact still insists that the shape of the site drives the waivers. When this board concluded really firmly at all at the prior hearings, that the as of right project would be viable but for costs related to environmental remediation, assuming that could be established. So there shouldn't be this insistence about the um hardship linked to the shape of the site. The setback waivers actually are only needed because the proposed project exceeds the initial setback height. Whereas the as of right doesn't, and you can build an as of right project without ever getting to the setback height. So you're causing the problem complained of with your proposed project. So you can't say that the shape of the site is the cause of those setback waivers. It isn't. Um the premium cost for remediation has been reduced to one point uh six-six million or six percent of the total project cost. Um and that was based on Commissioner Shet's recommendations for de-watering and elimination of costs unrelated to a remediation. So the scope of waivers should be directly related to that degree of hardship. So one million sixty-six thousand is is what we're talking about here. Assuming the remediation costs there are, it's are, let's say, reliable. Um and more to follow with Commissioner Ollie Brown and Sheta. Um further, um construction costs were reduced to reflect the use of spread footings instead of friction piles, as was discussed. Um the F A R request is sixty percent greater than allowable, which provides also for increased housing density and fewer than required parking spaces. So there's a lot of waivers being requested here. Um that I'm not sure, uh I'm sure some of my questions are repetitions of earlier ones. But if groundwater is at eight feet, an unsuitable fill material goes down to eight feet, then why is the site being excavated to fifteen feet for a cellar that is only storage and mechanical rooms? Um I, what I, and maybe I'm not remembering what the degree of remediation of soil, required soil removal is for remediation. But it seems like you could just take away the unsuitable fill under normal circumstances, and that's the end of that. You have an eight-foot cellar or maybe a ten-foot cellar. Um there were twenty-five hundred pages attached to the technical memo that was submitted on January twentieth, which memo was intended to respond to board comments. Many of the twenty-five hundred pages pertain to other sites. I'd like to know, what was the purpose of that submission? To prove that you've done your homework or something? Because we can't review twenty-five hundred pages. We can go look at a page in a twenty-five hundred page document if you tell us why to go there. But we're not going to be digging through twenty-five hundred pages. That was very confusing to me. Plus, it takes up an enormous amount of data space in the board's databank, and that's expensive. And you, um let's say taxpayers pay for that data space. Um so I'm I'm still not really understanding how the one point six-six million premium costs support a sixty percent increase in floor area. And if no actual affordable units are typically provided onsite, how does it support an eighty percent increase? Because that would lower your allowable floor area as of right down by point two F A R. Um and those, yeah, those were my comments. So Vice Chair Shonda.
So I start up with the inclusionary. Um I had similar question. Wasn't clear from the documents whether the inclusionary housing was going to be provided onsite or offsite. Um and the floor area, I mean, the the generation of the site affects the financing. And that was a question for me, and I would like Commissioner Brown to determine whether that was factored in. Because I didn't quite see it, but I wasn't sure. Um with regards to the parking requirement, uh wasn't quite clear whether the parking requirement. If the inclusionary housing is included onsite, then it would affect the parking requirement. Because inclusionary housing parking requirement is lot less. Do not know if it was analyzed accordingly, so need a lot of clarity clarity on the inclusionary. Just stating inclusionary is not enough. It needs to be clearly laid out and connected with all the other elements and requirements. With regards to the direction that was given last time, uh where we had, uh the board had asked the applicant to change the foundation and the associated costs with regards to uh reduction of the foundation and the remediation. Applicants seem to have done that based on my uh reading of it, but I would like to hear that from Commissioner Ollie Brown and Commissioner Sheta. And if the reduction in the development cost is resulting in the um waiver uh and the reduction in the floor area and the number of units, if that seems to all work, I just need more clarity on the inclusionary housing and all the connecting all the dots and those elements.
All right, thank you. Um Commissioner Ollie Brown.
So I I just want to start by saying thank you, Commissioner Shonda, for asking these questions. But I'm not the person to provide the answers, because I'm not the applicant's rep. So I I I hear that you have questions, but the the applicant's representatives have to answer your questions. All I could do is provide questions myself and my own opinion on what I'm reading. So that being said, um it's nice that they reduce the F A R, yay, in the proposed. However, it's still double what is as of right. And to be honest with you, the major source of their uniqueness finding, which is the contamination, is still up in the air for me. I think that this case is premature because I know that they're going to end up suing Newmark. When New York State D E C goes on record recognizing that a site is the source of their contamination, that is laying the perfect foundation for a suit against Newmark. So given that.
New Heart.
New Heart, sorry. I thought it was Newmark, New Heart. So I don't understand how we could possibly figure out what the B finding and the E finding is. Because whatever we grant is going to end up giving this owner a windfall. Because they're going to get money back from their suit. And so I don't understand why we're even contemplating this. But given that, the remaining uniqueness that they talk about, which is the hardship of the triangular shape, to me, there is no impact, virtually no impact of the uniqueness of shape on these financials. First of all, the triangular site does not prevent them from using all of their as-of-right floor area. So they can't even make that argument. And not only that, the as-of-right shaping does not impact those apartments in any way. Those apartments are almost all squared off and they're of appropriate size. So I don't understand how they can talk about that being a negative impact on their apartment sales or rentals, rentals in this case. Um they talk about the triangular site shape contributing to the cost due to an extra facade. But when you look at the cost differential between the as-of-right and the hypothetical as-of-right, there's only an extra sixty-three thousand dollars in development cost for the entire project. And not only that, the as-of-right only suffers five thousand five hundred dollars less in gross annual income than the hypothetical as-of-right. So to me, that's hardly a hardship. That's like a rounding error. And it most certainly is not deserving of an adjustment of the cap rate of from six percent for the as-of-right to five point five percent to the typical as-of-right. Not at all. So going on from that point, because at that point, I just looked through the financials and just to see, you know, whether or not their assumptions were accurate. And for instance, I noticed for their residential rentals, they have comparables for both one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And the comparables suggest a certain average price per square foot. And then what they do is they take that average and they use that just as a general idea of where they want to go. And they put it in a stacking plan. And then at the end of the stacking plan, they give you the total square footage and the average price, um the income per month. And each time, it turns out that what you have in the stacking plan indicates a lower-than-average income per month for each apartment than what is suggested by your comparables. And that's problematic. If your comparables are suggesting a certain average, then you need to figure out in your stacking plan either how to get to that average price per square foot or income per month, or get rid of your stacking plans. Because what your stacking plans are doing are distorting the income you can get and bringing it down, and that's problematic. You have to go with what, if you're using comparables, you go with what your comparables indicate. You adjust them appropriately, and then when you get the average that's indicated from that, that's what you use. Um let's see. In terms of the cap rates used, as I said before, between the as-of-right and the typical as-of-right, there really isn't any less income that's conceivable or cost to justify an adjustment of cap rate. When I do a fallout um analysis to see what cap rate will, when divided into the income, would get a value that's equivalent to the development costs. For the as-of-right, you get a five point two cap rate versus the report suggested six. And for the typical as-of-right, you get a five point nine cap rate. And for the proposed, you get a six point four-five percent cap rate, which basically means to me that even though they're saying, oh, the as-of-right shows a loss, the as-of-right does not show a loss. It just indicates that the return on investment is less than their suggestion. They're suggesting you should get six percent on a project such as this. They're getting five point two percent on a project such as this. It's not that big a difference. Every whole point difference in cap rate is a difference of seven percent of market value. So from five point two to six point oh is less than seven percent difference in value. So I'm not convinced that there's a hardship here. And I certainly think it's premature to be granting them anything over the as-of-right floor area, given the fact that I know they're going to be made whole at some point. So those are my comments.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah. Madam Chair, can I just say, I I think what Commissioner Ollie Brown has said um has been very informative and helpful for me. And I will, I would like to say that I do change my viewpoint based on that.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll get back to you because I want to hear from the other commissioners, but we'll get back to you on that. I also see Jella's hand up, and sometimes we learn something we didn't realize in the application from the project manager. So go ahead, Jella.
Hi, I just have something quickly to add. Um you didn't say that um nothing was submitted about the parking demand? Um.
Uh, right. No, what I said was they needed to justify why they weren't satisfying the demand. The demand was six spaces and they're only providing three. And they, they didn't explain why a variance is needed for that, not in the statement of facts. It's, there isn't anything to explain why they should get such a waiver.
Oh, okay. I just did also want to add that um the consultant sent B S A staff not submit. But it wasn't made in a formal submission, but they did send B S A staff on Saturday. Um a revised E A S and a letter. So um and they did discuss the parking demand on page one hundred and sixteen. The board hasn't seen this yet, um but in my answer, maybe if the consultant can speak to it, in my answer. The question, I'm seeing that the study says there are seven. There's a demand of seven now, so I I don't understand that. So um maybe they can explain it. Um I haven't uh had a chance to compare it to the previous one since it was sent in, you know, Saturday, so.
Right.
Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. So that's in the E A S, but what I'm talking about is the seventy-two twenty-one findings. Um, you know, why should they be entitled to that waiver when we haven't seen them providing parking on the site? And then and have them show us why they can't provide all now seven.
Right.
Six spaces, I think, are required by zoning.
Nine spaces.
Nine spaces required. So when usually on a variance, we'll say you have to meet demand. Or on all the applications, we'll say you have to meet demand. And with a variance, we'll say, well, we want you to meet demand, but maybe there's no way that you can. But now we don't know why there's no way that they can. They have never shown us that. They never talk about the parking. Because they have this drive-through. It makes it really nice. The drive-through could also just be parking instead of a drive-through. So, okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, um this is, this is the thing that I was reviewing until two A M. The two thousand two hundred twenty-eight pages, I guess. Yes. Oh my God. So uh amazing. At this case, I did learn new things, and I'm going to mention them soon. But let me, let me go over the hardship pillars one by one and show whether they stand or they should be knocked down. Shape, based on the financial analysis of the applicant, their own financial analysis. Shape is not imposing any hardship. They did, they ran two analyses, one for hypothetical rectangular and one for the actual shape that was uh submitted to us back in July of two thousand nineteen. And we looked at it, yes, July two thousand nineteen. And and it did conclude that the base construction cost. If you just forget about the contamination for now, the remediation, it did conclude that the base construction cost is roughly seven million for both, for hypothetical rectangular and for actual shape. That, thi- this financial analysis is dated July twenty-third twenty twenty, I'm sorry, not two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty. So that was a long time ago, concluded. It should be done. I'm not sure why we still hearing and reading and getting submissions on that. It's not just waste of the city system. It's waste of our time too. And and that's, that's not good. Uh that, the second thing I will go over is, and if you wanna, if you wanna follow up with me, you can go to the financial analysis uh of July uh twenty twenty, Ju- July twenty-third twenty twenty and look at the numbers and 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 verify that the two, the two numbers are almost i- identical, meaning that the shape is is not in the play anymore. Uh the second thing is the foundation construction or the foundation cost comparison letter. It's no step in negotiations. Now, after we like squeezed the last hearing on using pipes, after after two hearings, and we said your own geotechnical report indicated that you should be using spread footing. Why are you using pipes? And and now, okay, yeah, you know what? You're right. Spread footing could be less expensive. So let's forget about pipes, but like we used to on every single application on a variance. You know this game? If you push it from this side, it goes up to the other side. The typical gate. So, oh, you, we had pile foundation with twelve feet excavation previously. Oh, but if we go to spread footings, we're gonna need fifteen feet of excavation. Why? Why do you need, why would spread footings need fifteen feet? And it's, it's amazing, you know, it's a good, it's a good piece of information that a guy like me learned that, yes, spread footings need deeper excavation than piles. But explain it to me. I used, when explaining something to people, I used to tell them why. I used, when explaining something to people, I used to tell them why. If you tell somebody why, he's gonna understand and you're gonna benefit this guy forever. He's not gonna forget it because he got the reason. He got the wisdom behind this. What is the wisdom behind needing fifteen feet excavation? On a spread footings and twelve feet excavation on pipe? I have no idea. Teach me if you can, please. And, and then if you look at the quantities for excavation. Totally different for, for pile options that is twelve feet. They mentioned three thousand one sixty-four. Actual quantity is ten, two thousand three forty-four, thirty percent more. For spread footings, actual is almost three thousand. They used four thousand. Again, thirty percent more. Why? You, if you don't have a calculator, I have four, I can give you one for free. But don't do that to me. That like makes me feel bad. And, and, and de-watering, I kept bigging them. This side has. Uh, what we call it, aquatrot layer. It's. Pre- imp- impervious layer. That extends in two boardings that you did on the side. Meaning that you have a confinement layer. If you wanna do de-watering on this, just put the shearing in. Seated, this is the fifth time I mentioned it. Seated two feet into that layer. Put whatever, put wells, well points, thumbs, whatever. Of course, the cheapest is sums and thanks God, they bought that. After a year and, and almost a year and a half, they bought, my opinion that sums are more. Uh. It's much less expensive. So if, if you wanna de-water this side, put cutoff. Put the de-watering facility, whether it's some or wells. Take the water out. It's like a closed. Container. If you take the water out, it's not gonna come back because it's closed from the bottom. The response to that is, oh, we just did two boardings. And we cannot like assume that it's confinement layer. Okay, you did two layers. You get the, you get, you did two boardings and you get this layer in the two boardings. If you don't buy this, go do two boardings more and prove it to me. That in one of the boardings, you couldn't find it, but you didn't do that. So. I don't understand. And, and this, the impact of this. Is destructive on the financial. Because instead of fifty days of de-watering, it's gonna take the de-watering down to probably three days. And that's it. And, and, and I don't understand. Tons of new claims are like inserted in this submission, really? After a year and a half, you're going to new reasons for the hardship like thick fill? Aside with eight feet of fill or ten feet of fill has thick fill in New York City, really? And, and something called, this is new, this is after thirty years in practicing geotechnical engineering. I did learn a term called flowable sand. I never heard of this. I know dense sand, loose sand, medium sand. I know fine sand, poor sand. But flowable sand, I know the confiable sand. But flowable sand, this is really new. And by the way, I, I used to do de-watering like I eat my lunch. So any, any sand could be flowable, any sand. Whatever, if it's underwater and if you don't do it right, sand is gonna flow. There is nothing called the flowable sand. It's not a specific type of sand to claim it as a hardship. So thick fill is fake, flowable sand is fake, shape of the site is fake. Contamination, it's minimal. And you could get compensated for the site next door that caused the contamination like Commissioner. The Attle Brown mentioned. Oh, but we're not sure about the outcome of the litigation. And you know what? Until you're sure. We cannot grant you because we're not sure. If you're not sure that you're gonna get something, we're not sure that you're gonna get something. And if you get something and we grant you something, we cannot undo this variant. Right? If, if, if we grant you two floors, two extra floors and you go build them. And then in ten years from now, you get compensated from the guy. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to say knock down the two floors, you don't deserve them, you're not, you do, you do not qualify for it. That, that simple, it's. I, I, I can. And then the remediation cost. Remediation cost in this submission. Are disappeared. They are not presented to us like numbers. You know why? Because we started this case with three million dollar remediation cost. Technical memo one was like twenty pages or so. And then technical memo two, after we knocked down the first one. Remediation cost went down to one point five million, almost half. And then we said, oh, but you still have the shearing here. You're gonna need shearing either way. You have de-watering, you're gonna need de-watering either way. Fix this, fix that. And if they did. And if they modified this remediation cost. And they presented it to us during this hearing. We could have been done in five minutes because they could have concluded themselves that they do not have hardship. But because they know the game, they didn't wanna do that. They came back with more than two thousand pages memo. And you know what? Be my guest, read it. And go through it. And when you go through it, give me your con- your conclusion. And my conclusion is, yes, I did read it. I don't go over it. I did look at the material from GZA for the adjacent site. I did look at the border logs. I did look at tons of data that I didn't need to do to look at it. To, just to be fair, and that's what I said yesterday. When, when we ask you to do something, please do it. Because we care and you should care. If you don't care about your client, I don't know what to say about your fact. That's not good. When we ask for something, it should be provided. This is not a joke. And, and the, the technical memo magisterially went up to two thousand two hundred something pages. And it's adding tons of data that are not needed. Why to just exhaust us? To get us to a point to say, okay, let's grant them something and get peace of mind and get rid of this case. You know what? I'm not gonna give up. No, this case does not qualify for any grant and I. Please, please, let's close this and to put it to rest in peace today, not next hearing. Thank you.
Wow. All right, thank you very much. And I'm sorry you actually, I s- I scrolled through two thousand pages and read maybe thirty. But I certainly didn't read all two thousand pages, but at least I knew they were there. Thank you for actually looking at them.
Sure, because, because you're, because I'm the only one who can like flip and look between the lines and see if. You know what? Every time I reach a conclusion that, no, this guy doesn't qualify for something. I keep, are you sure? Because I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be judged on this. I don't wanna put a judgment. And later on, I realized that I didn't do a good job and I did hurt this guy. So I keep reading and reading and reading. Saturday, Sunday, the entire day. Probably I ate lunch and after, it was a soccer game that I wished to watch. And I didn't. I, I swear that happened. And I said, my son called, you wanna watch it? I said, no, I'm not watching it. I'll go do this. And it, two AM. To read a memo like this and at the end, it's not needed. Why?
It was remediation about all of these other sites. I don't even know what the relevance of those other sites were. But anyway, but to show us what remediation on other sites looks like, I mean, I didn't understand.
I'm not, I'm not sure whether these sites qualified for any grant from us.
No.
Did they get any grant?
They didn't, they didn't tell us. I don't know why they gave us those sites.
So if, if they had remediation and they didn't apply for BSA, even if you have remediation. They shouldn't apply because they didn't get anything, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay, Kim.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, we've been at this since October twenty-second, twenty nineteen. I just want to say for the record, if it takes longer than a year, perhaps there isn't a case.
Hmm, yeah, good point. All right. I, I don't have notes that said this is your last time. My notes from the last year and don't say you have one more try. That's why I don't know that we, yeah, okay, fair. Commissioner Shaveta, thank you, everybody. Really so much work.
So I, I really uh don't need to add much to everything that's been said, but I do want to say that. Um, this should have been withdrawn in October. Uh, and I think that was a tactical error. I believe that you just gave, you may have just given to the defense of three, four, five experts. Speaking about uh how your remediation is, is limited. And that's prop- that may hurt you in the litigation that you're, you're in right now. Now, past that litigation, uh, I, you know, if, if I, I suggest, I suggest strongly. That the applicant withdraw today. Uh, and come back after he's uh, after his litigation, if there's anything to come back for. Uh, but right now, um, I, I, I think this may have been a tactical error. Uh, to the application, to the, the applicant community, it's, it, it's wise not to, uh, if you're in litigation, to wait. Uh, to come here, both because of the double dipping that we may occur and we won't hear it, but also. Uh, you have, you're providing free experts to the, your opposition.
Interesting. It assumes there is litigation in place already, but um, maybe not. So, yeah. But anyway, all right. I really appreciate everybody's incredible hard work. Um, I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Shonda, Vice Chair Shonda, because she.
Yeah, I think light up everything that I've heard, especially from what uh, you know, Commissioner Artley Brown stated. Um, uh, with regards to, and also what uh, added information Commissioner Shabeta provided. Um, definitely the hardship has not been justified. Um, and that the fact that the as of right site financially can be done and the difference between the hypothetical and the as of right. Um, is miniscule at best and can be corrected. Um. Definitely puts a question to, is the shape really driving the hardship?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, all right, let's move on. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Next one, right, Tony? Uh, you're muted, Tony.
You've got me muting so much. I, I just like, it's like, whatever. Twenty nineteen, two, six, three, BZ, twenty-one, twenty-two, Richmond Avenue, Staten Island.
Yes, just one second. All right. Well, I, I, I want to say that this submission, um, I thought was very. Um. Let's say well-assembled, well-crafted response to our many concerns. Whether or not it finally answers the concerns remains to be seen, but I think the, the quality of the submission was very high. And after seeing so many, often seeing submissions that are not of this kind of caliber, I, I want to thank the applicant. I know that they had to adjourn the hearings a couple of times because they didn't feel like they had all their materials together. And so I think it's kind of like it was worth waiting for. Um, so, um, and I think it was responsive to the community board because, community board's concerns. Because they issued a new resolution. Um. Recommending approval without conditions. The last time was with conditions, but I would like to hear from the council member. Um, who had a lot of comments in the earlier submission, so if they could reach out to the council member to get some comment from them or if we could do that. Um. Oh. So the main issues discussed at the, really the only hearing on this matter, we had to adjournment subsequent. Um, which uh, the only hearing was in May, were the proximity of the um. Of the drive-through really to residential property lines, the noise from the menu board and cars, maneuverability. Um, and a crowded lot with two buildings and two businesses on it sharing the parking lot area. So that was the, the concern. This board, um, I have to say, has learned a lot about drive-throughs over the last year because we've had some really detailed. Uh, participation from neighbors with drive-throughs. And one of the many issues um that have been brought up is the noise that comes from the cars themselves. Car lighting and even the, the noise from trash collection. Um, the proposed changes shift the building towards the center of the site. And adds a devoted curb cut with the queuing line cer- shifted a little further from the rear property line to allow one foot for an acoustical barrier. So that's, that's a big acoustical barrier and a minimum five foot front to back planting bed. Um, the acoustical analysis asserts that forty-five decibels is obtained from the speaker output at the property lines due to the acoustical wall. Um, but I'd like to ask, what about output from car radios, motors, et cetera? And um, ask uh, that the materials be forwarded to DEP to review. Uh, these, these materials were submitted like January twenty-first, so there's not been enough time to send to DEP for review. Um, the maneuverability diagrams show cars making the turns. Um, but there's also one for what they, what's described as SU thirty. I don't know if that means an SUV, um, SU thirty that apparently doesn't make the turn. Um, it seems to kind of go way outside of the turning radius that's shown on the queuing line. So I didn't actually understand. How that's demonstrating success. Um, and obviously DOT needs to review that part of this, that submission. There's also a traffic impact analysis that confusingly shows no change in level of service between a twenty-twenty no build. And a twenty-twenty build um situation. And I, I actually don't understand that. So I need, I need help with what, what actually is the no build condition assumption? Is it a T-Mobile alone on the site and passed by traffic only? Or is it the assumption that maybe there would be another commercial use there that just doesn't have a drive-through? So it, it comes into parking lot. I, I, I don't know. And maybe the EAS was clear, but I didn't find what the no build condition is. It just seemed very strange that you have no change in level of service at the intersections. Um, with respect to traffic lights and so on. Um, there's also, sorry, um, an interior trash room is shown on the plans. Thank you very much for putting it inside the building. That was one of our comments. But I'd like to understand how it works with respect to crash pickup since there's no door on the outside. Um, luckily, because that door would be then facing residences, which is exactly the opposite of what we want the trash to do. But there is no door on the outside. So then how does it work? Do they? How did it, what happens with the trash bags? Are they hauled out right before? Right at the time of pickup, like what, what happens? You know, it, it's a twenty-four hour operation, I think. Um, so does that mean the staff member is hauling the trash bags out when the, when the truck comes? I didn't understand that. Also, they need to clarify on the frequency of trash pickup. Is it daily or um twice weekly? Um, what is the current trash pickup schedule for the T-Mobile site? So that would help also understand in terms of the generation of noise with respect to the. Um, the, just the truck that arrives. Um, pickup is described as being between ten PM and five AM. Um, we learned from another drive-through that that's a very unacceptable hours range. Um, because it ends up happening in the middle of the night and it's very, very noisy and disturbing. So that, that, those, that hour of pickup needs to be. More like between nine PM and eleven PM, some, something like that. I forget what we did on that other site. That was the McDonald's where we reduced the trash pickup hours to not be in the middle of the night. We should, we should look at that. And uh, let's see, in terms of seeker. Um. Type to send, they did send a traffic study without, that's June. Okay. All right, never mind. So we're gonna send all those materials, right, Tracy, to?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, if we got the go-ahead, we will send them after this hearing.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so Vice Chair Shonda.
I just want to, based on.
I just want to, based on my, my prior notes, the hours of operation is 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
So yes, this definitely was worth the wait. The plan is, has been very responsive to the comments we have received from the community board and the board has given. This is a significant improvement and by having two entry points, two separate entry points serving two different types of need, definitely makes the circulation better and the entrance to the drive-through. Instead of making that very sharp, you know, 90-degree turn, it's much better. And this would reduce the backup of traffic onto Richmond. And they have added additional queuing area in the, I think, previous one was 10 and this one has 12 reservoir spaces. So definitely, a lot of thought has been put into this design to reduce the vehicular backup on Richmond Avenue. And do have a question regarding, oh, one comment with regards into the sound, you know, like with all the drive-throughs we have been asking, they should put signs that no loud noise or lower your music radio, whatever, needs to be there along the entire route of the drive-through. And also where the vehicles will be parking, even though I'm told those would be only for employee parking, just to be on the safe side. I have a question with regards to the traffic analysis, the turning move, specifically the turning movement analysis that is on chart. The turning movement analysis that is on page A7. And I was trying to understand it and, and I would like the applicant to clarify what does it indicate? Because the, based on that, it shows turning movements one and two, which is for the entry point to the T-Mobile site and turning movement three and four, which is associated with the proposed Starbucks. Now, it seems to indicate that vehicles entering and existing, it indicates vehicles entering and exiting the proposed facility. So does that mean that from 1:00 PM to 1:15 PM, one vehicle is entering and one vehicle is exiting? And from 1:15 PM to 1:30 PM, no vehicle exited the site and four vehicles entered the site? And my reason for asking that question is trying to understand the peak period that the applicant had identified, number of vehicles that are queuing, and how long does it take for the, from the time one enters the queue for the drive-through to the point one goes to the menu board, makes an offer and comes around? So that also gives, would help me understand how long is a vehicle waiting in the queue, which would affect the sound coming from the motor vehicle and any backups and other things? So that's why I was trying to understand that chart and what it is trying to represent. And I would appreciate, I know a lot of effort has gone in and it would be helpful when these charts are provided to explain what the purpose of these charts are. I know they are very, very technical and they are meant to respond to one question, but it needs to be tied to the narrative. So that, that, that is really my main question, otherwise, you know, this is in the right direction.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown.
This is a much improved project. So I just have two small questions, one of which is, if you look at the site plan, the drive-through and the parking lot to the south of the drive-through, I'm wondering if it could actually be separated by a curb so that drivers cannot cross over?
Can I, can I, can I answer that question? Because I have a similar question, but when you look at the maneuverability plan, if you look at the maneuverability plan on page, I think, page C15. So there they're using SU30, which is a truck. And in order for the truck to be able to maneuver out, so basically it allows the vehicle to maneuver out of the queue at that point.
But why?
It can't make the turn, that's why. It must, in order for it, that's what my question was. There was the SU30 and the truck couldn't make those turn. I didn't know it was a truck, I thought it was an SUV, but.
So you would have a problem if cars were there? How would he make the turn if the cars were parked?
Right, oh, interesting.
I, I'm confused. I, I don't, you know, maybe they'll explain it. And then my other question has to do with the sound plan, the measurement plan. It, it seems like there, there are footage measurements that don't make sense. So for instance, the lot line, I believe, is 28 feet away from the speaker, but there's a 32-foot marker that's closer to the speaker than the lot line is. So if, if the lot line is 28 feet away, how could you have a 32-foot away marker that's between the lot line and the speaker? So I, I don't know if that's an error.
When you say marker.
So they have like these measurements of footage?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's an inconsistent dimension.
It looks to be inconsistent unless I'm not understanding something.
Okay, all right.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I want to, I want to thank them for the modifications they have done. I, I only have like slight concerns. One of them is regarding the installation of the sound barrier. Specifically, I'm talking about section AA on sheet C-13. This is page 13 of 18 of the PDF. They listed two options. One of them, if, for section AA, if you look at the section, you're going to see that the barrier will be flush in and out. The other one, the barrier will be flush from one side and on the other side, the I-section, the wide flange, will be extruding behind the barrier. I'm, I'm not sure if there is really like a real difference. My understanding is that they're going to design the post and whether it's a W20 or 15 or whatever. And, and the sound barrier itself, it's four-inch. So if they put the column in, whatever is lift beyond the four-inch is, is going to be there. So I believe at the end of the day, they're going to go with section AA. And, and my concern is, when you look at this from the neighbor's side, it's going to look very ugly because you're not going to see a flush, nice, if you had a pleasant wall. You're going to see a wall with I-sections extruding like, like this is a really, it's, it's like an excavation support thing. It's not really looking, looking good. So I would ask them if they're going to use option two to make the flush side to the neighbor's side. And if they want, they can put any sort of installation on their side to make it look flush. But please do not give the bad look to the neighbors. This is, this is the first thing. The second thing is for the sound barrier extension. I'm, I'm, I'm going to need to, to share my screen on that. This is where the sound barrier stops, right here. I'm not sure the car enters from here to the drive-through and from this point, or actually from this point here, from here, up to here. I'm wondering if we can add this piece because the car is so close. And I, I don't think there is a real difference between this car and this car when it comes to its close proximity to the neighbors. So if we can just extend that piece, it's, it's probably, it's like 25 or so, 25 feet or so. That would be helpful. Then, then when the car is entering here, it's far away from the property line. So most likely, its impact, it's going to be much less on the neighbors. And, and that's all what I have. And again, I want to thank them for what they did. Thank you.
Thank you. It's the last car in the queue, basically. Right. Sorry, it's the last car in the queue that you're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Commissioner Shabeta.
Thank you, Chair. I want to second Commissioner Sheta's statement. I think we've learned about drive-throughs that not only that the cars are often were making most of the noise, the music, et cetera. So I do think that adding a bit more of the sound attenuation would be helpful. I also think that we should add signs, as we stated in another case, about keeping music down, et cetera, around the site. So we can at least try to eliminate the noise pollution. I had comments with regard to the drive-through hours. I want to know how the rest of the board felt about the drive-through hours and what could be done about the garbage pickup, whether that could be more respectful to the neighbors.
So now, now that we know that the hours are 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, the trash is picked up during the time that it's closed. So it means that where, how does this work? The, it's not like the trash company comes inside the building and goes to the trash room. So now we're talking about garbage bags being brought out onto the sidewalk or out onto their walk and just kind of sitting there for however many hours. And we're also talking about potentially a pickup at midnight when it's noisy. So that.
We asked, we asked to limit the drive-through because of the noise that the vehicles will have coming in and out on the neighbors. That's to have the garbage truck do the same seems counterintuitive.
Exactly. Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Are we done?
Yeah.
Okay, so this concludes the public review session. We will now commence with the public hearing.
So before we do that, it's a, it's quarter to 12. I don't know how long the first case is going to be. Is everybody okay with continuing or do you want to take a break now? No comments? Okay.
Go.
Yes.
Okay, this is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for February 9th, 2021, 10:00 AM session. You want to call in at 646-558-8656, Zoom webinar ID numbers 91460276925. First case is new case, appeals calendar, item number 22, 2018, 1088A through 189A, 19428 and 194, 19432, Dunton Avenue, Queens. Mr. Noriega is in the room?
I am.
Are you doing it only or is Richard coming?
Richard is not, but Michael Kang, the architect, might be joining us. But if he's not on, I can handle it without him.
Okay, you don't need to be sworn in, Mr. Noriega.
Perfect, well, good morning, Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. We listened to the review session this morning and I just wanted to start off by clarifying a couple of things. This is an R12 district, so the only uses permitted for residential users are actually single-family detached homes. I think there was a comment that we were building 15 two-families. These are actually 15 single-family homes that happen to be two stories tall. That may have been the confusion, not that it's.
Mr. Noriega, I got that off of your statement of facts, so please.
It makes a 15-two-story, single-family home.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's, I think where the confusion is, they're two-story, single-family homes. But I will double-check the statement of facts just to be sure. But that's what we were, I just wanted to clarify that. There's also a comment that these lots are very large and by comparison to some of the neighboring lots, that may be true. But it's actually the zoning minimum. In an R12 district, the lots have to be at least 60 feet wide, which is why they've been designed in such a way. And it's actually what's driving the, the need for this GCL application because effectively the, the applicant has designed it in such a way that they started at one side, did a 60-foot wide lot, did another 60-foot wide lot, and so on and so forth. And the two lots at issue, one's almost entirely within the street and then the other lot is partially in the street. And there was a question as to why we needed that waiver at all. And the answer to that is, the, the main home isn't in the lot, or excuse me, in the street, but the driveway and access and what we are building is in order to get the back, to the back of the lot. But also it creates an absurd result. If this wasn't given a waiver, this would be treated as a corner lot because it technically abuts a mapped street and then would have to provide the large front yard requirements for an R1 district, which is why we brought it as a GCL 35 waiver as well. We've been working back and forth with DEP for the past couple of months and we will be doing a submission after this hearing. We didn't submit it because it doesn't change the, the requests that we're making, but it does add certain things to the site plans, such as the sewer location and the water lines, where the hydrants are, which DEP wanted to see. So we will be submitting that shortly. We are a little concerned about what easement they're asking for. We got an email this morning, we'll follow up with them. Our understanding is that's just a, it's, it's effectively a typo on the tax maps. They call these street widening areas, street widening easements. But it is not technically an easement, so there's nothing to submit that's recorded for this. It's just the, the official map shows that these are mapped streets, but it is not an easement to the best of our knowledge, but we will continue to review that and work with DEP on that. But other than that, we appreciate that the board acknowledges that, I mean, this is a difficult situation where we, we don't have the ability to really build much feasibly in that area because of the street and allowing us to build this single-family home in that area would be greatly appreciated. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Marjorie, you're muted. Madam Chair, you're muted.
Sorry, if I, thank you. The, if I've got this right, the only reason for tax lot 61 that you need this waiver is so that it's not treated as a corner lot, is that correct?
That and part of the driveway will be in the street.
Okay, and that's normally requires a waiver?
That is my understanding, that's correct.
Okay, so you've heard from DOB that you needed a waiver or you don't know?
That is what their objection was for this site. I, I don't know if it was specifically brought up with them in question about the driveway, but that is my understanding correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, and it would be weird to treat it as a, so just to put this in perspective, if we granted on 160 to build in the bed of the street, then it would be quite weird for lot 61 to have a front lot line, front yard facing lot 160. That would be frankly bizarre, right?
Exactly, and I, that's why it was great to bring these two applications together because comparing the two, it does seem very odd.
Yes, okay, got it, thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay, so let's open this up to the public, we may have public on this.
Sorry, I do want to say it would be helpful if, in, if we are to require a revision in the statement of finding if this clarification with regards to why lot 60 needs it and the absurd result can also be clarified.
Right, oh, yes, that's a good idea, right.
Sure, in the statement of facts, it should be at the bottom of page four, talking about how it would be treated as a corner lot. But if you'd like, I could elaborate on it and submit it further.
Right, so it's, what she's saying is, we're talking about the absurd result. You just said it would be treated like a corner lot. What we just said is, it would be weird if 160 is an interior lot on the, on the street and then it's sitting next to something that needs to be treated as if it's facing a street with a front yard. So then that becomes really bizarre, absurd, right?
Understood, so I'll add in for additional information, the absurd result when compared to the neighboring lot as well. Understood.
Can you also clarify, I guess, look at Buildings Bulletin 2014-001, which clarifies when privately-owned mapped streets can be used for zoning purposes? And to the extent that that's relevant. And to the extent that that's relevant, include it in your statement.
In what respect? I'm very, I'm familiar with the bulletin. What are you? In what respect for both lots, or is there a specific?
In response to the board's question about why a GCL 35 application is necessary for the driveway.
Understood.
Sorry, which is, what, what's the number of that technical notice?
2014-001, which was issued January 9th, 2014.
Okay. All right. If there are no other comments, let's go to the public.
Yeah, you're gonna have some of the neighbors and I think one of their attorneys, because they're upset about this project and the treatment of the neighbors in this project. So this is 2018, 2018 188A and 2018 189A. This is 19428 and 19432, Dunton Avenue, Queens.
Okay. So you explained how to get in, 646?
Yeah, oh, sorry, 646-558-8656. And the Zoom webinar ID number is 91460276925.
And if you would like to speak on this application, please raise your hand in Zoom, or if you are dialing in by telephone, please press star nine.
I don't see anybody yet.
Let's give them a chance, because, well, there are 12 people, there are a lot of people in the waiting room.
Yeah, the neighborhood is very upset.
Mark Breski, we will allow you to speak now. You have three minutes. Please state your name. And please unmute in order to speak.
Okay, thank you. This is Mark Breski. I'm the attorney for Holliswood Civic Association. Do I have three, three minutes? Is that my time limit? And I thank the Chair and the Commissioners for hearing us.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I listened carefully to the review session and counsel that just spoke. There are three issues really I'd like to, to address. We represent the Hollis Civic Association, which represents the interests of about 1,100 homeowners in Holliswood. We've been assisting the association with this matter for several years, and I personally attended the community board meeting, at which time both applications pursuant to 35 and 36 were unanimously denied. The first thing I'd like to address is that I believe that the instant application should either be tabled or denied, probably for technical reasons. The existing site conditions and proposed site conditions contained on pages one through three of the applicant's revised statement of facts and finding dated April 24 are incomplete, misleading, and fail to disclose material change circumstances in those site conditions. The applicant has concealed material changes, for example, that on August 20th, 2020, the applicant's ownership in lots 52, 54, 57, 154, and 156 were transferred to the prior mortgagie Icross with respect to the lots in this project. Inclusive of those lots, 154, 156, and 57, which the applicant includes as excluded lots, states that they are proposed to remain vacant at this time. He says that, the applicant says that on pages two and three of its revised statement of facts. The applicant no longer owns these lots, has no personal knowledge as to the intended use of these lots and whether they are to remain vacant. So the statement is false and misleading. Interestingly, the applicant also fails to inform the board that its decision to withdraw its 36 applications for waivers must have been based in part because the applicant, again, does not own lots 54, 154, 156, and 57. The applicant also fails to disclose that ownership of lot 52, which is where the hospital is located, was also transferred to Icross on August 20th, 2020. The statement on page two, that the vacant hospital building, open quote, dot, 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 will not be altered, dot, 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 close quote, is also misleading and disgenuous. The applicant, again, is not the owner of that lot, not the owner of the hospital, and the applicant's self-serving predictions as to the future of the hospital are without any probative value. And interestingly, the applicant also fails to inform the board that its decision to withdraw its Section 36 applications for waivers must have been based in part because, again, the applicant no longer owns lots 54, 154, 156, and 57. In short, the community nor the board has any realistic idea as what is intended to be constructed on the overall property in lieu of submitting a Eular process overseen by DCP or an application to BSA a site of this magnitude in a residential R12 district. Initially proposing 19 houses and proposed condominium conversion of the former hospital would ordinarily be part of a program or application. The developer moved quickly to subdivide the site, assign separate building application number to DOB for each individual lot, thereby sidestepping what certainly would have been a complex land use process. That kind of review process should have been conducted for such a large development, which will have impacts to the environment with respect to topics such as air quality, water runoff, utility consumption, noise, traffic, reengineering, and the like. With respect to the lots 160 and 161, these two, the two proposed houses that the applicant refers to should not be allowed to be constructed. Considering all of the new development occurring at this site, the community believes that the map road will be needed to accommodate additional traffic and for other environmental concerns. A full traffic study should be completed prior to any consideration of this request. The proposed development would create unacceptable hazards with respect to the use of adjacent roadways would be detrimental to the public welfare with respect, and dangerous traffic conditions already a problem on surrounding streets would be exacerbated. There will be strains on infrastructure in both private and municipal services, which would increase as well. I wonder why the applicant hasn't sought to build on any of the other vacant lots, which it still owns, rather than seeking to prematurely utilize a bed of a mapped street at this point in time on the basis of false and misleading statements contained in its, in its filings. And I would like to incorporate by reference the statement that was prepared by the Civic Association on its own, which details the bad faith, the illegal conduct, and the unclean hands of the applicant. I realize that the board, in, in listening to its review, considers this sort of a perfunctory process, but I strongly request that, under the circumstances, the totality of the development be taken as a whole and take, and taken into consideration. What began with 19 lots and has changed drastically throughout the last several, several years has only led everyone involved to, to, to understand that nobody understands what is being built on this property, what is to happen with the hospital, what is to happen with the lots referred to that are owned by the mortgagie, et cetera. And with respect to the applicant's request for a fair return of its money, the applicant purchased this property at a foreclosure for far less than market value. Any financial issues the applicant is facing are self-inflicted, caused by its own efforts to construct initially 19 houses on the originally historic lot 52. And in essence, lot 52 has had its own facts clarified. It, until lot 52, has had its own facts clarified, and we all know what will happen to this vacant hospital and how many homes will be placed in this establishment, in this development. It is impossible to determine what the effect of granting this application would be at this juncture.
Mr. Breski, you're gonna have to wrap up.
Yeah, well, that's basically what I wanted to say. It's premature. I think the applicant at a minimum should be compelled or requested to submit a revised, another revised statement of facts so as he can accurately reflect what properties it owns, what properties it does not have control of. And this way, we'll be in the position to understand that neither the applicant, the board, nor the community, nor any elected officials has any idea what is going on. This is a premature process that need not be done at this point in time. I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to the next caller. So there's someone with last three digits, 342, who has their hand raised. So let's let that person, you can unmute yourself by star six, right? Star six on your.
Yes, star six.
And, and when you can hear us, please state your name. There you go.
Yeah, hi, my name is Alex Olson. I'm a neighbor of the development. Can you hear me?
Yes. The beginning.
I wanted.
Go ahead.
I have three minutes, okay. Thank you. So I appreciate being able to speak today to yourself and the Commissioners. I'm, I'm a neighbor of the hospital development, and I'm not in favor of this variance request. And simply for the reasons highlighted, obviously, by, by Mark as well. I think particularly striking are the facts that the developer has an Azerite solution to, to their own design problem. Beyond filing with the, the DRB, there's been no input from DCP or any other authority charged with urban planning in the city. This variance request for the right to build in the bed of a mapped street is, seems to be symptomatic of this and reflects the, the whole ad hoc nature of the, of this development. The developer at first provided a subdivision plan without any other information. And what's, what's happened is there've been eight separate zoning challenges issued to the DRB and acknowledged by the DRB demonstrating zoning and land use issues with, which are, which are not compliant. I know that the, in hearing the opening remarks, the, the Chair was very laser-focused on looking at this individual lot and to see if, whether it would be acceptable to receive a variance, but I think you have to zoom out and look at the, the wider, the wider issue here, which, you know, simply put, it's a six acre site. There's over 200,000 feet of buildable area. And to request a variance, it's the developer's answer to a design problem of his own, of his own making. And, you know, contrary to, to the developer's claims in the statement of fact, they, they have an Azerite solution. They've built six houses currently. They have not exercised any other construction in the area. If they had reorganized their, their subdivision and recognized what the limitations of the site are, that you, you know, that, that all these zoning challenges that have been filed with the DRB Express, that you can't build 21 houses on the site. It's a, it's a number. Mark mentioned 15. Now with the, the mortgagie taking, the mortgageor taking the certain lots away, that, that number regresses back to 11 or 12. So I know the, the Chair mentioned initially that, well, this appears to be okay from a zoning perspective. When you look at it from the big, bigger picture, not zooming into that particular lot, but looking at the entire six acres, it's, it's very possible that this, this, this isn't acceptable. And, and like Mark said, it's, it's definitely, definitely premature. And certainly, there was a lost opportunity for.
Sorry, Mr. Olson, your three minutes are up.
Okay. So I just wanted to say there wasn't, wasn't an opportunity for public participation in this and the results of what you're seeing right here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's hear from the next speaker. Who is that? Sorry, I can't see. Somebody whose first digits are 201. I can't see. Oh, that's Mr. Olson. Okay, last three digits, 089. We'll allow that person to speak. And state your name, please. And to unmute yourself, star six.
Hello?
Yes.
My name is. My name is Lisa Valentino. I'm the president of the Holliswood Civic Association. I think Mark and Alex have given you quite a good overview of what's happening. But I just want to mention that this time, there's something that DOT might take into account when they revisit this development. Holliswood and Community Board Aide are currently speaking with the DOT regarding direction changes on 191st Street and adjacent streets, which if the DOT plan goes through, will deny access to the people who live on Clover Hill Road and Clover, Clover Place. They will have to go out of Holliswood by going down to Hillside Avenue or 188th Street, which are very, very heavily trafficked roads in order to leave the neighborhood. If DOT could use the property in the map street between Clover Place and Dunton Avenue, these residents would be able to go and come from their houses very easily and would not cause them a hardship. I've been advised by the neighbors who live on those streets that real estate agents have told them, if the DOT plan goes through, their houses will seriously decline in value. So I would like, if it's possible, somewhere in the future, for DOT to look at that and to use that mapped street for access for our neighbors who are already living there. And as you can see, we sent in a 20-page objection to what's been going on. This man has been a horror. We've been dealing with him. It'll be six years this March. And he has not done one thing right, as far as we're concerned. He has caused leaks, floods. He's got garbage, and it's been unsecured property. It's just a horror. But I would like to address these two lots right now. And I think if DOT could manage to use this mapped street so that the access for our neighbors in Holliswood would be made very easy, I would, that would be something that could be thought of when they look into allowing this man to build two houses on these two properties, 160 and 61. So at this point, I guess that's all I really have to say. He's caused this much aggravation, time, work, money. We've gone to millions of meetings. We've spent a lot of money. There's been a lot of time spent, a lot of paper wasted. And I would just like to see these two properties denied because it would just, just make it better for us all around as far as Holliswood is concerned. And I thank you all very much for all of the hard work you've put in and allowing us to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valentino. I actually have a question. I didn't have the map in front of me when you first started to speak, and I wanted to try to follow along with what you were saying about access. What is it that happened to cause you, this community, to be locked off from the neighborhood? Because it's already not an improved. DOT does not own the bed of the map part of Clover Place. They would have to condemn that portion in order to be able to make Clover Place go all the way through to Dunton Court. So having Dunton Avenue. So, so I'm trying to understand. So at the moment, the people who live on Clover Place and, and Clover, what is it, Clover Hill, don't, don't have direct access to Dunton. So what is it that you're saying means that they now need to have access?
But at this point, we are dealing with the DOT, and they are planning to change a, a street. You can't see it on the map. 191st Street, Hayward Road, Foothill, they're planning to make direction changes. And if they do that, the DOT plan forces the people who live on Clover Hill Road and Clover Place to go down to Hillside Avenue to get out of Holliswood and get to 188th Street to access the Parkway. This is not, at this point, they can, the way the roads are now, they can get out of the neighborhood. But if the DOT plan goes through with these direction changes, they will be locked into Holliswood and would not be able to access the Parkway unless they go down to Hillside Avenue and 188th Street. And that, that's a proposed change. This is what we're dealing with right now. We're speaking with the DOT regarding direction changes on those streets. And we've been trying to.
I have a question. I, I'm trying to understand this. So right now, the residents living. So right now, the residents living on that block bounded by Clover Hill Road and Clover Hill Place, sorry, Clover Place, they generally would exit out of Foothill Avenue and then would either go to 191st Street or go to 93rd Street, right? To Hillside Avenue.
If they want to go north without hitting Hillside Avenue and 188th Street, they can.
No, I'm just asking the question. The question is, right now, the residents living on that block bounded by Clover Hill Road and Clover Place exit onto Foothill Avenue, which connects to 191st Street and 193rd Street, and both of those streets provide access to Hillside Avenue?
Yes. No, the 191st, at this time, does not provide Hillside Avenue, access to Hillside Avenue because it goes north, only north. It's a one-way street.
Oh, it's one-way north, okay. So only 193rd provides access to Hillside?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
This is a big two-way street.
Okay. And then the proposal is to change the direction on Foothill?
They want to change, they want to make Foothill one-way, they want to make Haywood Road one-way, they want to make 191st Street going south only. So what would happen is when these people come out on Foothill, or if they go to 193rd Street, they can only go south, which brings them to Hillside Avenue. And because it's a short street between Foothill and Hillside Avenue. If they go to 191st Street, they will only be allowed to go south again. So if they want to get to, like right now, they can get to the Parkway by going through the neighborhood through Palo Alto Street. They don't have to go out to 188th Street or Hillside Avenue. So this is going to be a big hardship for them. They will be forced, they will, they can't get, they can't get out of Holliswood unless they go south. They can only go south.
Okay.
With, and so if we had, if, you know, if D O T could use this napped street and give them a ni, it's a nice big wide street because it's a good 60 feet wide. And if they take over the street easement, it could be, it could be 60 to 70 feet wide. People could go and come from that area with no problem. They could get from Clover Hill and Clover Hill Road and Clover Place to Dunton and go through the neighborhood that way.
But you understand that they don't own, D O T does not own the roadbed. The city doesn't own that roadbed. That roadbed is privately owned. So the only way that they could make the connection that you're suggesting is to condemn the property or to buy it outright.
Well, is that, yeah, that's something that I would like the D O T to consider or whatever we have to do to make that happen. You can let us know. I mean, I'm not that savvy about what I need to do, but it is a thought because I don't want the, I don't want my neighbors there to be trapped. I mean, it's, it's a problem for them.
So, so these are really D O T long-term capital planning programs, capital improvement programs. We rely at the B S A entirely on D O T's information about their plans with respect to these roadways. And most of the time, you know, for instance, Clover Place is owned by D O T, right? But the section that we're talking about, those two little lots are not. So they would need to have in their improvement budget allocated money to acquire those two little lots. So, so you know, if, if you're trying to change the circulation pattern in this area, this is really up to D O T. And so all I can say is you and your community members and the city council member and so on should be speaking to D O T about the proposed change. Maybe D O T will back off of the directional change. But, but we, we don't have control at all over D O T's capital improvement projects. We just get a letter from them. They say either it's in their program and they intend to go forward with the street widening or lengthening, or it isn't, right?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Looking at the tax map, it will require acquiring Lot 160, 61, and part of Lot 44, which is not even under this development plan. Because Lot 44 is a, like an L-shaped lot, which already has an existing building on that bed of map street.
Yes, so that's another point. Thank you for reminding me about that. So yes, when we look at the aerial photo, there's already a structure on Lot 44, which fronts on Clover Hill Road and already sits in the bed of Clover, Clover Place. So now you're talking about condemning a structure that belongs to somebody, somebody's house. I mean, I don't know if it's a house or, I didn't do a drop-down.
The structure you're, you're speaking about is a gazebo.
Okay, but so you're talking about condemning another person's property. The house is already built. I don't know if it's a house as part of this larger development that you're opposing, but it's, it's a pretty large structure, according to satellite imagery. So, yeah.
That was just something, you know, I mean, I realize you can only deal with these two lots, and that was just a thought that I was, you know, thinking that, that this could, this could be helpful to our neighbors who already exist, as opposed to this man who wants to squeeze in as many houses he can possibly squeeze in.
Right. Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but you already have a very nicely developed site here by a private property owner who's part of your community, and they have their, looks like their garden, and maybe that's a gazebo. I can't get my little, little Google guide to come down, right? So, yeah, you're talking about condemning that person's house. How do you feel about that?
No, the house is not a problem. The house is on, faces Clover Place.
Yeah, I see.
And it's got a garage next to it. There's a driveway, there's a garage. And then across from the garage, there's a space between the garage and that structure you're looking at is a gazebo. It's a big square gazebo.
Right.
With that, I know what it is. Yeah, I know what it is. But the, his house would not have to be condemned.
No, but his property would, and that gazebo would have to go in any site improvement, if there's a swimming pool there or whatever, right? So, you know, just saying, he's already, that person's already a part of your community. And so what you're suggesting is something, aggression against that member of that existing community. So, yeah, so anyway, let's move on to the next speaker. I do appreciate you calling in, but there's a lot of other people who, there are other people I think who want to speak. Are there, actually, there are other people in this, but I don't see them. If, if anyone else who's in the waiting room would like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. And if you call in, you dial star six, star nine to raise your hand. So.
This is for the Dunton Avenue application, application only.
So I think we heard from everyone who raised their hand. And I do appreciate all the members of the public from calling in. Again, we are focusing only on these two little applications that, where we rely on D O T's direction about whether they have plans to move that street. And as we note, there's already a structure and a private property relying on that bed of the street. So that sits right there on Clover Place. So, but we have open questions. We're still waiting for D O T and D E P information, right? So, so all we can do is put this on for continuation. But so Mr. Noriega, how much time are we talking about?
As far as our submission, we can turn that around in a week or two. But I think the, the bigger issue is we're going to need to talk to D E P to find out exactly what they need. So it's really going to be communications with them. That's going to drive this.
Okay, but so what should we say, eight weeks?
Eight weeks sounds great.
Okay. All right. All right then. So thank you absolutely, everyone from calling in. And I say, Mr. Bruski, if you want to submit something in writing, please do that because you talk really fast. And so it was kind of hard to follow along. And that way, Mr. Noriega can also respond to your, your comments because otherwise, like I said, you talked really fast and it was, it was hard to catch. Okay. So I'd like, so for the benefit of the public, the way this works is Mr. Noriega told us that he needs about eight weeks, and we're guessing the, the agencies need that much time to get back to us. So based on that, we'll set a hearing somewhere in the sort of 12 weeks from now, sort of 11 to 12 weeks from now. And that, the date of the hearing will be available on our website, but you can also call Tony Matias, who's our deputy director, or Carlo Castanza, who's our executive director, and ask them when the next hearing will be, okay?
When the next hearing is set, I'll, I'll let Ms. Valentina know.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah, because I have her email.
Okay, great. So that makes it easy, and then she can let everybody else know. Okay, thank you, everyone, for, for calling in. And at the moment, it's 12:21, and we haven't had a break. So let's take a 10-minute break back at 12:30.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, everybody. Ready? Yeah. Do we have everybody?
Yes, we have at least.
Okay. Three commissioners, where's the others?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, good. Okay.
So we resume with the public hearing for February 9, 2021, 10:00 AM session. The next item is item number 23, 2020-49A, 3830-28 Street, Queens.
Okay.
This should be Alexis Landsman and Marvin Mitsner.
Yes, we see Alexia, Marvin.
It will just be me today. Um, I think I should be able to answer all your questions. I, I think Marvin is watching, but I'll, I'll get started. Uh, I've attended the executive session, and I wanted to, to address your comments. Um, I just want to start by saying that this file, this application was filed in March 2020. And at that point, we really didn't know, uh, when the TCO would be obtained. It was right before COVID started, and so, um, luckily, the project went smoothly, and the, uh, the applicant was able to obtain that, that TCO. But we're still requesting the, um, the application, the extension, just as, as Commissioner, um, Eli Brown had mentioned earlier, for belt and suspenders reasons, we want to make sure that if the, um, if the DOB requests alterations for drawings, and, uh, we just don't want there to be a challenge, um, due to the fact that there was no extension of time renewed during, um, retroactively. Um, and, um, with regards to the, um, statement, um, we had submitted a statement earlier this morning, um, and we had told Tony that the TCO was obtained. And, um, in that statement, we also mentioned findings, because last week, we had a case review that was very similar, and we, um, and we were told that we just, we, uh, needed to address all of the concerns for the board, and the project manager had requested findings, and, um, the owner was able to, um, provide those findings for us. And so we had submitted a statement to address those.
Sorry, you, what do you mean, the owner was able to provide the findings? We were asking for proof of expenditures.
Yes, that's exactly what I mean.
Uh, so. The statement of facts that you submitted, not that it does us any good, because we can't review it, right? Um, so, um, so, you know, word to the wise going forward, appearing before this board, our project managers ask for something for a reason. Please don't write, send back that you, you don't have the authority to ask for it. Instead, answer their questions and submit the materials. That would have saved you a hearing and, and potentially weeks, because I don't know when we can bring this back, right? So, um, so, yeah, so there we go. Um, so we're not able to review the materials that you sent this morning. Um, Commissioner Ali Brown, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'm actually looking at the statement, and I see that you did update your expense figures, but I don't, I don't see that you updated your loss state, your serious loss statement, and you didn't provide any backup for all of that information.
Yes.
So what, what we mean is, you know, checks, I think the, um, the architectural statements or invoices to back up those statements.
So with regards to, uh, providing documentation for that, unfortunately, the owner's office has been shut down, um, since COVID started, and so he has no access to, um, the checks that he had in his files. Um, but we're happy to ask him for those documents again, to see if he can provide it. Um, and with regards to the loss, there has been no, um, recuperation, um, from, from the building, cuz it hasn't been used as a hotel as of yet. And so with regards to the loss, um, I, when you, when you request, um, information with regard, with that regard, uh, do you mean provide new numbers for the loss, or just like to add in that number?
So, for instance, um, your analysis that's actually noted in your 2012 resolution talks about the loss, saying the floor area would decrease from the proposed FAR5 to a maximum FAR of 2.0, representing a loss of 7,350 square feet of floor area. And it goes on to talk about how they would lose stories because of the street wall height being lowered and the total height being lowered. And then you can also, they talked about demolishing the top five floors, which would eliminate 12 of the 16 hotel rooms. And then you could say, and since then, we have spent this amount of money, and so that amount of extra money would also, like, just give us an updated, um, view of the loss. So we know you made the initial serious loss finding, but just give us updated figures, which of course, the loss is just going to be greater.
Right, of course. Got it. Thank you. Yes. Okay.
All right, then. So any other comments from anybody? Okay, so I would like to then go to the public.
The application we're discussing is 2020-49A, 3830-28 Street, Queens. If you wish to call in, it is 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 914-6027-6925. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand.
Um, and, uh, while we're waiting to see if anyone calls in, um, Ms. Lan, Landsman, um, one of the, let me see, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Um, okay, so how much time will you need to submit that material?
So with regards to just an updated statement, um, to make those changes, um.
No, I'd say, hey, sorry, updated statement with backup material.
Yes, so I have to speak with the client, but I think we should, we would like to put it on the calendar as soon as possible, as the TCO has already been obtained. Um, so when is the earliest?
My question is, how much time do you need to put together your material?
Um, I want to say two weeks, probably.
Um, so one of the, uh, my questions now, remember, is you said the owner can't get into his own office. I, I actually don't understand that.
So, so he was unable to provide the, um, the expenditures for today's hearing. However, I will, um, we'll find a way to, to get those expenditures.
Not that, it's, it's not a government office where you can't get inside or something like that, right? It's his own office, where there's presumably some file cabinets or something with the checks in them, or even you go online, because banks have had online receipts for at least 10 years that I can think of, right? So you could even go online like that and print out the receipts that way, right? The other thing that, um, that Commissioner Ali Brown was referring to when she talked about the architect's receipt, it's the requisition for payment. That's an AIA document where it depends on how this construction project work, but when you have a standard relationship between the developer and a builder, the builder submits an AIA document that's called a requisition for payment that the architect reviews, or the bank reviews, and decides to release the amount that's requested. And so that's the cleanest way of establishing how much money was expended up until X date, like 2017, and then how much money was expended by the time the project completed, like right now, it's a TCO. Um, so presumably, there's a little bit more work that's left on the job, so not all of the money has been paid to the contractor. If you've had a standard relationship like that, then you'd have this AIA requisition for payment, okay?
Okay, so I will let the, um, applicant know.
Okay, and, um, and the other part of the question was, what's left to be done to get a permanent CO?
So at this point, um, the only thing that needs to be done is the, um, the owner needs to get a letter from the fire department, and then they should be able to obtain a CO.
Uh, so basically, a, a sign-off from fire department.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you, everyone, with that one. Uh, three weeks to submit on what I'm noting, because you never know.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice day.
Okay, next one.
Next item is zoning calendar, item number 24, 2016, 4463BZ, 6202, 14th Avenue, Brooklyn. This is the law officer, Jay Goldstein. Ah, Mr. Goldstein.
How are you?
How are you? Are you by yourself?
Uh, I should have. Unfortunately, the architect was gonna be here. He had an emergency, uh, in the family, so he's not here. I have with me Mr. Gutman, who's from the school, and right now, that's all I see. So it would be just the.
Hey, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Mr. Gutman? Yes. Okay, please proceed, Mr. Goldman, uh, Goldstein.
Thanks. Um, good afternoon, Jay Goldstein, for the applicant. I attended the, uh, or I listened to the review session, and I apologize to the board. I, I did put a significant amount of effort into this response. We did address, um, I believe, a number of the board's comments from the other hearing. Some of the comments were repeated today and remain outstanding. Um, with regard to the threshold question of whether we're a school, we did an analysis coupled with jeopardizing the information given to us by the school, and that's what we put into our statement and into our exhibits within this application. So within.
Sorry, you, sorry, you jeopardized the school's information? Can that even be done? I thought that has to do with case law and incredible computer programs that search all the different cases that were decided.
We, we took all of the information given to us by the school. We compiled it into a neat package that we presented to the board. Um, that was how we've done it in the past, how I've done my job for the last 12 years. I understand that's not how the board wants to see it now, so, um.
No, but, so let me just to clarify, you always, when you do that, you distill what all of those materials are provided by the school, but we also get the materials from the school. This read like, like, sort of free association or creative writing program. It didn't read like you were getting that information from the school. Um, so we actually need to see what the school's actual curriculum is, as opposed to. Yeah, creative, what looks like creative writing.
So what we did was took the curriculum that the board, that the school gave us, and made it into a chart that was, we thought would be easier to read by the board. That's why we presented it the way we did. Um, we weren't trying to create anything. We're not trying to, you know, reinvent the wheel that's already there. Um, so we can go that route, or as the chair mentioned, we can brief the, the, uh, religious doctrine of deference and go that route as well, which is actually how we, at the beginning of this process, we went as a variance, and then the, the board started asking, at that time, for the school, uh, special permits to be included abroad in conjunction. So that's when we, part of our notice of comments, we added the 7319.
So we do that because what we're trying to do is grant.
Variant.
Right?
I have no problem.
Yeah, no, but I do. So that's the, the point is, that if we cannot establish that this is a 1210 school, that, that's a significant statement. It's not a 1210 school, right? In which event, now you need to do more than like briefing a variance. I need, um, case law, and when I say.
Deference doctrine.
Yeah, exactly, and not from, not from board history in the past. It's from case law, from judge-made law, okay?
Okay, so, I, I mean, we can look at our options, and I guess discuss with the examiner throughout the, the next, uh, break on how to, how to approach this. If we can't satisfy the board on the 7319, then we will do the religious doctrine brief with case law to try and prove our variance application and amend our materials accordingly. Um, with regard to the broker's letter and the comments that were made, so this is an issue I've had with this case in particular, is, so we initially went one route of analyzing the, um, alternate sites, where we looked at sites that were big enough to see if they were available, and we did it within our catchment area. And at the last hearing, the board told us to expand on that. Go look at School District 20, which we did. Get a broker to give us the sites that, um, could accommodate our needs. When doing that, we instructed the broker not to, um, limit it in size, because one of the comments that the chair made is, if we take a number of sites that are adjacent to each other, and we combine them into a development site, would that work for our needs? And that was what the broker set out to do, and the broker came back with no sites that could accommodate the full, um, programmatic needs of the school. So there were no sites that were found, and therefore, you know, again, I, I can show you the larger, there were larger sites that were available, but they had, um, residential apartment buildings on them, and they're not vacant.
They're not available sites.
Correct.
Then they're not available. That's the whole problem with this.
So 100%, so per your comment, Commissioner Ali Brown, at the last hearing, I didn't show you those within the expanded search area. I did not show you the five, six, 10 residential buildings that are rental buildings that are available for sale, because they're not available for the school to utilize. So we didn't do that. All we did were sites that were available for purchase and available for development and/or conversion. And we looked at those sites to see if any ma, matched our criteria, and there were none, because they were simply too small in the azurite districts. So, you know, the, the broker did a significant amount of work on these, I think it was 219 sites, to try and find available sites for us to put in this catchment area.
So here's, here's just a question.
Yeah.
You go to a broker and you say, I need a three-bedroom apartment, okay? And the broker comes back to you and says, I have no three-bedroom apartment.
And we looked at those sites to see if any matched our criteria, and there were none, because they were simply too small in the as of right districts. So, you know, the broker did a significant amount of work on these, I think it was 219 sites, to try and find available sites for us to put in this catchment area.
So here's, here's just a question.
Yeah.
You go to a broker and you say, I need a three-bedroom apartment, okay? And the broker comes back to you and says, I have no three-bedroom apartments. I only have two-bedroom apartments. Would you go look at 210 two-bedroom apartments knowing you need a three-bedroom apartment? No, you would either go to another broker, or you would say to the broker, give me the largest two-bedroom apartments you have. Maybe some of them have studies in them, and I can turn that into a third bedroom. So you don't need to tell us that you have 200 and how many, 219 sites in as of right districts, of which we don't see any of them, because that doesn't help. It doesn't seem like you're doing a serious search.
Look, the reason we did it that way was to show that when we take two lots that are adjacent to each other. So we came up with a number of lots that were 1,200 square feet or 1,500 square feet lot that had adjacent lots. So you put them together, you have a 6,000 square foot lot. When you have an FAR of two, it still doesn't work. So we had to analyze all of the available sites, because we wanted a full picture. We took all the available sites, analyzed them to see if we can come up with a development site that would work for us. And that achieved no response, no, no alternative that worked, given the size that we need. So that was the methodology. We tried to do what the board was asking by analyzing adjacent properties as well to create a development site. And it just didn't have, based on what we need, the size we need, it just didn't, it wasn't available. So I'm stuck between, I understand what the board's, you know, asking. And in other cases, I recently filed another for daycare where we did exactly what the board was asking. We found other sites that were the same size that could accommodate us, but one of them was two miles away. One of them was, you know, in a fairly active commercial district, so we didn't want it. One of them was too expensive. So we went through it that way for the other site, but it was a much smaller programmatic need. In our situation, we couldn't find an alternative that was viable. And I believe that's what the zoning resolution requires, is that you look for an alternative site that allows the development as of right. And if you can't find one, and it says within the neighborhood to be served, we went well beyond that by doing the entire District 20. I do believe that we did meet that finding and that we've done everything we can in this case, understanding what the board's saying and how to apply it for other cases as well. But in this situation, I believe we presented you with a conclusive fact that there are no sites that could accommodate us as of right.
Okay. Yeah.
Again, I understand that it's not the way the board wants to see it now. I understand. And in my other cases, which have recently been filed, we are, you know, modifying the search to meet the new criteria. In this situation, it just, we couldn't do it. There's nothing available. And I think that's what the letter from the broker mentioned, and we gave you the alternate site map to show you the area where the student's coming from and also the entire District 20, which we searched as part of this.
Right, what are we gonna do?
I tried. The next, while we're talking, Commissioner Hartley Brown, with regard to this walking safety, I haven't ignored your question, and I haven't made any modifications to the statement of fact as stated in my cover letter. And this goes to Tracy's comment from before. The restriction on school safety and DOT put a moratorium on doing any sort of testing. So we're working with DOT because they all, school safety will often opine on the proposals for traffic guards and crossing guards and things like that. They lifted the restrictions from COVID in, I think it was December. Maybe three days later, this area was put in a red zone and the restrictions went back into place. And then they only lifted again sometime mid-January. So we scheduled and sent in all the information, and we're again able to now work with DOT to answer that. And when we have a more solidified school safety operational plan, which goes beyond, again, we can give you what we intend, but DOT may ask for something different, we'll present that to the board and give you a full answer to your question. But it hasn't been ignored, and it's, we haven't updated the statement effects, but we've mentioned it in our cover letter.
Jay, can you confirm what you just said? Did you say you did the traffic analysis?
I think it just lifted. We scheduled to do it, and I don't know.
Oh, you scheduled to do it, okay.
It lifted again. Tracy, if you remember, we had an issue where you sent me an email that we were okay to do the traffic, and then the day later, you sent me an email that we were in red zone. It lifted again after the holidays and after the New Year. So now we scheduled to do it again.
Okay.
Now we'll hopefully be able to finalize it. So I think that's with regard to 7319, I think the open, really the most important question again, obviously, would be the threshold question, which I will work with staff to hopefully address and/or brief the religious doctrine court cases. With regard to the building itself and the comments, we did reduce the vaults to only include the the cables and the required mechanical space, I guess. I don't really, I don't remember the name offhand. But I hear the board's comments, and we'll work with the architect to bring them within the building. And that'll alleviate the issue with regard to a tree waiver, I believe. So we can work, again, unfortunately, he couldn't be here today, but we will work with the architect to try and resolve that. With regard to the five feet at the rear yard, I hear the board's comment. We can see what impact that may have on the building and how it would impact the classrooms going up. If it can be achieved, we're happy to achieve it. And if it can't, we'll discuss in detail why it cannot happen. With regard to the trash compactor, the trash compactor we gave you, we gave you a cut sheet of it is specifically designed for fast food and for large buildings. It's fully enclosed and fully leak-proof. So this is actually the type of compactor that we've used on other schools, where the board asked us to provide a compactor instead of a refrigerated trash room. We've used this. It's not emptied at the site. It's taken off-site, emptied and brought back. So we call sanitation to come pick it up. They take the entire mechanism, empty it, and then bring it back to the site. So we believe in, based on what we've done with other cases, that the trash compactor is the, I guess, cleanest solution for this project. So we can add details to the fence at the ground floor. As noted, it was mentioned in our EAS, and we do have sign off on the noise, but we'll give you details and appearances for that. With regard to the lunchroom, the gym and the auditorium, so Vashashonda mentioned or questioned whether or not we can reduce the auditorium and/or reduce the gymnasium by including the vaults, because we may have enough space between the two to accommodate everything and perhaps either get rid of the vaults or get rid of space at the upper floor. There are different types of uses that go on during the school, so I would just have to go back to the school, work on the timeline just to make sure, to see that we can accommodate all the students, but it's something I'll explore. And if it can be done, we'll try and accommodate that. I know that some of the classes have gym while some of the classes have lunch. So the lunchroom will be fully open while the auditorium upstairs is being utilized. And also, I know that there are different types of therapies, physical therapy, that involve running around and different tools and balls and things that therapists use with the students that may need a larger space. So it may impact or may conflict with having a gym at the same time and a gym at the same space. So we'll have to look at the two rooms to see if we can accommodate that. With regards to the home economics and computers, the reason you see 7B at the same time in, let's say, the home economics class and the computer class, is because half of the class will go on a Monday to computers. The other half will go to home ec, and on Wednesday they'll switch, so that you'll have half of the class in one room while the other, while the other half of the class is in the other room. It's the same period in the day, but the rooms, given the differing type of class that goes on in a home ec or a computer class, that's why they'll split up the classes during that period and rotate on a Monday or a Wednesday. That's also why we have two of each class, is it allows us to accommodate more students at the same time to achieve that goal of giving them that education. As mentioned, the EAS is in process where, hopefully now we can finally finalize this. It's been an ongoing process for some time, and I'll update Tracy as soon as it gets done. And finally, with regard to bus parking. Last night at about 12:30, we finally found a site where we agreed to a lease, and we have a site. It's an M11 district. It's 12,500 square feet. There are no other buses parked on the site, and it will adequately accommodate 15 buses, which is our girl's school and boy's school projection once this building is built. So I will work on that lease and get it to you for the next hearing, or in advance, though, so council can review.
Thank you. So those, the buses that are currently parked on the site, are those the buses that will be moved there?
Correct. Those buses on site right now, as mentioned in my cover letter, and I think in the statement of facts as well, those buses are for the girls and the boys. We'll move those buses offsite to be parked at this new location.
Okay, so yeah, so please convey the recommendation that there they have an M11 site, perfect for bus parking garage. And it doesn't have to be, it could be bus stackers. I've seen bus stacking garages. So they really need to stop using these one-level parking lots that end up becoming school sites, right? And then you have to move the buses again, right?
I'll relay the message, and Mr. Gutman, who's administrator, can relay the message as well.
Right, and we did have one, I don't think that was your case. We did have one pretty horrific case. Actually, I think it was by the same school group, where they had a bus repair facility underneath the school. So that's not an option. That was like fire department, like they were, they were beside themselves 12 ways, because the exploding bus underneath the school concept was just too much to be able to tolerate. So no, you cannot park buses inside your school buildings, but you do need to permanently deal with this problem, which is really kind of something that imposes on everyone in the neighborhood in a way that's just not right, so.
Understood.
Okay.
So I believe those were all the questions. Just kind of as a brief wrap-up, I will work on the definition of the school, on the threshold question about the school. I'll work with the architect regarding the vaults and regarding the auditorium lunchroom, and we'll provide you with the detail of the fencing. We'll update you on the progress of the EAS, Tracy, and we'll provide counsel with the lease agreement to see if you meet standard.
Okay, great, thank you.
And again, I apologize if my response was unclear, but we did, I believe, address a lot of the board's questions, and we worked very hard on this, so I hope that.
Yes. I never doubt that you're working hard. It's very clear to me that you're the one who's constructing the argument and provide, and like digging down and trying to pull data or whatever. But your client needs to actually have the data that supports your statement, right?
I believe we have it.
Okay, and it can't be something that they just sort of wrote up yesterday. There must be something that's published that makes people want to send their kids to this school as opposed to another school.
It's not, it doesn't really work that way in these communities, because you have, this is a sect. They go based on the sect. This is the school's, this is the school system for that sect, so it doesn't, you're not gonna see what, like, it's different than the schools I went to.
No, I know. It's true that, because we know this, that it's a sect, then it's the school system for the sect. But if I learn that in that school, this sect has many schools of the same age group. So if I learn in that school that the teachers are better at the other school, maybe I'm gonna try to get my kids to go to that other school, right? So what is it about this particular school that offers a little something that might make people want to go to this school as opposed to that school? In fact, you once told us about that, where there's like, at a high school level, there's sort of this competitive thing that goes on, because maybe the kids will want to go into this school versus that school. And it actually, maybe it wasn't a UTA school, but it was another one. I remember that, and so there's.
The yeshitas differ incredibly based on how you grew up, so it's hard to, it's hard to compare what one school does versus another school does. My kids would not get into a school like this, and their kids would not get into a school like I went to, for no reason other than it's a different background and differently, you know, different customs.
But so I, you know, the underlying theme here, as you probably know, there's a lot of information in the news about this particular group of schools and their attitude towards providing a curriculum that meets Board of Education minimum standards. And so it's not from nowhere that I'm bringing this subject up.
This school is recognized and does have textbooks, and we'll provide it to you.
Yeah, textbooks. We went on a site visit once of a school that had a textbook standing like conveniently located on a stair railing to show us that they had a textbook. So yeah, that's not gonna be enough. We know, I see that they get.
My textbook was in college, in high school, so I.
And I see that they get financing for textbooks and for other things, but, you know, that's not enough. Getting financing to buy them is different than actually using them, right?
Understood.
Okay, so let's, I don't know how to say this any other way, it'll be okay. Okay, all right, so how much time do you need? Did we already go to the public?
We did not go to the public.
So let's go to the public.
I can, while we're at the public, probably.
Well, wait a second, wait, let her, let Tony announce.
Sorry.
The application we are discussing currently is 2016, 4463BZ, 6202, 14th Avenue, Brooklyn. If you wish to speak, it's 6465588656. Zoom webinar ID number is 91460276925. And if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, so while we wait for that, how much time do you need?
Four to six weeks.
All right then.
I hope that gives us some time on the environmental.
Sorry, say that one more time, what?
Four to six weeks, because I'm trying to give some time on the environmental.
Doesn't that take 30 days, though? 30 days.
30 back and forth.
Yeah.
Six weeks, I hope to have some better movement.
All right, let's see what we can do.
Okay.
Maybe more like eight, to make it easier for the turn, so.
Okay.
Okay, good, all right. I don't think we had anyone call in. Nobody raised their, if any of the people who are in the Zoom room would like to speak on this application, please raise your Zoom hand. This application is 2016, 4463BZ, 6202, 14th Avenue. And you'll submit also, of course, the sort of lease arrangement or whatever that is.
Yeah, I'm gonna submit it to Kurt. I'll submit it to Kurt for review.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. See you later.
Next item is 2019, 25BZ, 40-48 Commercial Street, Brooklyn. This is the office of Sheldon LaBelle. Okay, let us know when everyone's present. Messiah and Adi, you ready?
No, Mr. LaBelle will be joining us.
Sorry, just, I was just sending him the link. He was having trouble joining the Zoom. One minute.
Apologies, it appears that I'm on Amanda's links. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, we see it. Okay. Okay, everybody, I swear you in. Everybody, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. LaBelle, please state your name for the record and proceed.
Richard LaBelle of Sheldon LaBelle PC for the applicant. Good afternoon to the board. The applicant team has listened to the board's extensive comments at the executive session and the review session. So, Chair, Commissioners, the technical memorandum which was submitted directly addressed the points that were raised by the board in the last hearing, and. And the chair's made a comment in the, in the review session essentially that the last hearing, the board's comment wasn't wrap this up or you've got one more hearing. There were substantive issues and questions and concerns that the board had, which we feel we made a very good faith effort to address. You know, the, the foundation cost and method, the remediation method and costs, changes to the layout of the building and reduction of the waivers that are requested. So I think there's a few things we'd like to do. What, what we'd like to do is understanding the board's very, you know, serious comments with regards to the application. What we'd like to do is have the professionals, the appropriate professionals, particularly from an environmental standpoint, and particularly with regard to Commissioner Sheta's comments, as well as Commissioner Hatley Brown's comments. Address those comments to the board, clear up what we feel are some misconceptions regarding the, the methodology that was used by the applicant. And then after that, and hopefully with that knowledge, the applicant team will make a decision on, on going forward with the application. We understand the board's comments with regards to the application itself. And whether or not they feel it's a meritorious application, but we would like this opportunity, given the fact that the applicant really did, really did make a very good faith effort here. And we feel that if we can clarify that to the board, it may address some of these misunderstandings.
Okay, so I'm, I'm feeling the board is kind of, they are tired and first certainly Commissioner Sheta is tired after reading 2,000 pages of we don't know why they were submitted. So what I would have to say is it's 10 after one or it's 12 after one. As you know, we have a 2:00 PM hearing. So I want this not to go on for more, the entire thing to not go on for more than 10 minutes because we've already put enormous amount of time into this application over many hearings. So let's just say you have 10 minutes to dissuade the board from their current position, which is either that the application is premature or that the application is not meritorious. And so I give, I give you 10 minutes to do that. So think fast because we have another.
That has to. Understood. And again, we understand it's 10 minutes. We'll respond to the board's comments with specificity with regards solely to the legal issue of what I understand to be ripeness, which is whether or not this matter should be before the board. I would say it should be. We've done research with regards to the ripeness doctrine as it applies to variances in the state of New York. We have found nothing in the board's records which would preclude the granting of a variance application in light of potential environmental litigation against a private party. There are roughly 33 cases in the state of New York which have been litigated on zoning variances with regards to ripeness. None of those are on point with regards to the discussion. The only one which was partially on point was when there was a variance application which also made a takings claim. And it was determined that there was a estate fund that was available for the applicant to apply to for relief that particularly with regards to the takings claim, not the variance application, that the application may not have been ripe because the applicant had not made that application to the state board. Here, there's no similar relief that is available. And again, because I don't want to take more of our 10 minutes, we're happy to provide this case law and discussion to the board in a submission. Thank you.
All right, keep going. Talk fast.
Okay. We would address.
Starting now. 10 minutes starting now. Go ahead.
This is Kevin Williams for Equity Environmental. And just to get down to brass tacks, first of all, I'd like to share my screen momentarily because I, I'm not only disturbed, but I'm rather upset at the characterization that we submitted a 2,500 page memorandum. We submitted a 23 page memorandum with an appendix that was keyed to every single reference that was made in the document. And it is clear that the board asked us to respond to very serious questions on the method of de-watering, on the cost estimate and, and on the foundation. All of these elements were tied together in a single memorandum, which if you had read the cover page, described the contents of that memo. It is clear that the board has not reviewed this memo despite statements made by this board. And I will indicate why, because there were several comments that were made that clearly either whether it was related to cost cut recovery, was related to the de-watering method, was related to the estimates, which Commissioner Sheta admitted that he did not review, or methods that were analyzed and reviewed. So giving us 10 minutes to respond when the board, you know, quite honestly, did not do their homework on this matter, did not bother to look at the memorandum that was chaired, did not bother to look at the memorandum and indicate that there was a memorandum and a backup. The reason why we supplied the backup is so the board did not come back and say, you have assertions that are unbacked up. And one of the indications that, that to me indicates this was not reviewed was the question of why you were supplying these remedial action plans for other projects. Well, it's very clear the method that was given in that memorandum was to first establish the notion of uniqueness of the site. Then that triggers the hardship. Then the hardship triggers estimating that hardship. And then that plugs in to Ms. Cohen's work. And so what was provided is we screened all of the sites within a quarter of mile the area for subsurface conditions, contamination, presence of E designations. And we provided a GIS analysis indicating and establishing the uniqueness of the site based off of soil, based off of off-site contamination, presence of E designation and other components, which did not necessarily factor into a cost offset. We only relied on the remediation cost. However, the finding, the A finding is a two-part test. One that has to establish uniqueness. We did this in order to provide the proper substantiation for the case. And, and you know, I would, I would appreciate an understanding of how this was laid out. Our idea was not to have you have a 2,500 page memorandum. We simply asked that you read this and then you have the memorandum as a resource. And what I would like to do is just to quickly show this because what this is doing is it's affecting our ability to respond to the board's very serious questions. And here, here, just to establish this on the record. So this is your memorandum, right? And it establishes the points, the response to comments, the establishment of the A finding, then those unique physical conditions of the site, proximity to New York City EDC remediation, depth of shallow groundwater, thickness of fill-in site, presence of flowing sands. Then we analyzed from this. So you know, we gave you known remediation sites and other sites in this area in proximity that, that have off-site contamination. Now, we provided comparative analysis step by step of, of the conditions that the site is beset with. Then I provided the visual methodology on how that was done, that there were two other sites. And then to further establish uniqueness is, okay, well, you have two other sites. So your site's not unique. What's difference between these two sites? They have E designations. They were developed. You know, the other point was that this is a small lot, having to do this amount of remediation on a small lot when carried through to the proposed and the azurite building program results in it not being occupied or built on for 30 years. Now, the point here being is you have evidence in the area that similarly situated sites or even, you know, casually similarly situated sites have not been able to develop. So the correlative data, you know, not only simply stipulating based off of my professional expertise or a team's expertise that there is a hardship associated, we actually delve down into facts. And then we're like, okay, there's two E designation sites for lots that are under 10,000 square feet that have been developed in the last 20 years in this area. What makes them able to redevelop? They have E designations. Well, we pulled the Epic file from OER, which indicated that there were medial action plans associated. What makes them different than this site? Primarily the depth of groundwater, the need to de-water and off-site contamination. None of them had the hazardous exposure that this site, so this site is unique. So then given that bases, then we captured, what are those differences in a table format? Then we literally went through a narrative. What are the differences? So that you would understand. Then we compared the two other sites and supplied that backup in, in the, in the appendix to the document. And in that appendix of the document, and we also supplied, you have the off-site plume chair as requested, pulled it out of the documentation and put it in the project to show that TCE plumes, which are incredibly hazardous, has been posed a public health risk that this site has to overcome, that it's not due to their own activities on site is what this site is beset with. And so then going from that, we responded to all the comments line by line by line. And I heard nothing in Commissioner Sheta's comments regarding the actual substance of the work was done, the drawdown test, because you know, related to de-watering to establish how much water had to be removed. And so I did not really hear any, you know, we are going to respond specifically to his comments. So I, I mean, I'd like an opportunity to do that. And then the part that is being characterized as a 2,500 page memorandum is a, you can literally click on this. If you want to go to the document, you can, you can actually click to the appendix. Go to the specific appendix. I did this so that the board did not. Please, please.
What are you talking about now? Stop, stop, please.
I am not done. I have 10 minutes. So I'm going to get this.
Both of you, sir.
I just want, I'm almost done, Commissioner. Almost done. Okay.
Click to, can you click to the geotechnical report and you got two minutes to do it? Show me where is the geotechnical report?
It's right in front of you, Commissioner.
Go back, go back there, go back there to the head of the document and show me how you go to that geotech report. You know what it is. You know the page number. Go to the beginning. Do not put the page number because I did put appendix B in the search. And I got like five appendix D in the document that named the same thing. I went to the page number. I got like five page numbers with the same page number. Why would you submit a memo like this? With my understanding is we start big.
All right, can you stop, Commissioner, for a moment? Because you asked me to do something very specifically. And here you go. Geotechnical report, one click.
We didn't have an active document. Maybe that's the problem.
An active document was in fact.
That's true. Yes. We can do that.
This is, so this is what was submitted and provided fully indexed. And what I'm getting from the board is this is too much.
For me to find the geotech, to find the geotech report, I have to write in the search appendix B and then keep digging. And I got like four appendix Bs. Every single document attached to this has an appendix B in it.
Okay. Okay. Because, and Mr. Williams, just a second. It's very likely because I also was scrolling around and I couldn't, I don't think when we received it, the document was active. Don't forget, we're all reading on different kinds of formats. And this is, this is downloaded to a system and uploaded to a system. And in the process, the links may die. So do understand that what works for you on your screen may not.
I understand. So Chair, fair enough.
We worked it out. We looked.
Commissioner Sheta, please just let him.
So, so Chair, thank you for that. And I do appreciate that notion, but this was submitted in the best intentions. Just supply full backup. And I apologize, Commissioner Sheta, if you had problems navigating through it. But my concern is that the substance of the memorandum was not reviewed by the board and characterized the way that I had just identified. You know, if you'd had problems getting to the cost estimates or the, excuse me.
He's saying it was. Yes, it was reviewed. So please don't accuse the board of not reviewing the materials.
Chair, you've accused us of supplying something to, to basically obfuscate the duties that were required. And we.
Let's get into the substance.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to do that because it was a big issue, right? Okay. So, so let's get into the substance. Okay. So there, there, there are three primary issues. Okay. One is the veracity of the estimate related to remediation and, and responding to Commissioner Sheta's concerns. I'm going to have the engineers discuss that. Then Ms. Cohen's financial analysis, which is based on that hardship and how that inputs. And then the last issue regarding whether this is all moot because of potential litigation cost recovery. And we'll deal with that in the end. There are some other minor issues that you had discussed regarding inclusionary housing, which I can believe, I believe we can deal with, with bubbles on the drawings and all of these things and the parking demand, which we can explain. I think these are threshold issues that we have time to permit. So what I would like to do is have Mr. Duran and Mr. Clark from my office respond to Commissioner Sheta's specific statements and also explain and walk through very quickly what we did to respond at the last hearing, because I thought we were in a good place in methodologically in taking the commissioner's advice on researching diligently a different de-watering method to lower the cost remediation and remove duplication and to look at the foundation system. And I like to show that we've been responsive to that. So Mr. Duran, will you please pick up on the comments from Commissioner Sheta on the environmental engineering?
Yes. And thank you very much, Kevin, for that. Commissioner Sheta, as you know, you and I have had these conversations a few times now. And, and each time that you've come back with comments and, and the rest of the board has come back with comments, we've addressed your comments. They are spelled out specifically in the memo that Kevin was referring to, that 23 page memo in a, in a section called response to comments. And as we went through this, we took a very close look at the remedial cost estimate and took into account your recommendation of taking a look at de-watering via sumps. We brought in the geologist Jeff Clark to go ahead and Jeffrey Clark to go ahead and take a look at that. And we also contacted the, the de-watering contractor to give us a new cost estimate for using sumps. And those, that particular estimate is included as an attachment to this memo. And in addition to that, we went out and did a couple of these drawdown tests that I'll let Jeff talk about to come up with a revised amount of water that was going to be generated. Keeping in mind that the cost that we got from the de-watering contractor were not based on particularly a quantity of water, but a number of days. And so those, those are all included in this package. In addition, when you take a look at the sheeting, we took into, into account your comment that you're going to have to have sheeting around the site for any given construction site. So what we did was we estimated what the total depth of the sheeting would have to be to tie into the confining later that you discussed. And we discounted that by the amount of sheeting that you would normally have for, for a construction site. And so what we're seeing there is there's a difference. There's a, there's a amount of sheeting that is just for construction. And the only cost that we included for the sheeting was the amount of sheeting that was required to minimize groundwater flow onto this property from the New Heart property, which is just to, to the south of it. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff and let him explain to you the steps that we went through as far as the de-watering is concerned and address some of your specific issues with quantity of excavation.
Before you do that, I, I got a question regarding the number of days. You, you recall that first or the second hearing, we had a discussion about the number of days. And you started initially with 7.2 million gallon. I recall the number extraction.
Yep.
And what I said is you're making, you're making two mistakes. You're using wells. And you should, you, you should think of some pumps and you did. And you proved me right. Thank you. And then I said the number of days, if you see the sheeting two or three feet into the lime, the ML layer, the clay layer or the silt layer, you're going to be able to cut the number of days extensively. I, I believe the number of days was 60 days and currently you reduce that to 25 days. I previously discussed this with you. And I said, if you run the system, the some pumps for two or three days, you're going to find that the drawdown happened permanently because the recharge into the closed backup is going to be a minimum because the only way it's coming is from the bottom. And your de-watering system is going to be not needed. You can stop it in two or three days. In this submission, you came back without any justification. Your drawdown test is not a justification because the drawdown test you've done is done in a test. It's not done in a sheeting that seated two or three feet into the clay. Am I correct or no?
I'm going to let Mr. Clark answer your question, Commissioner.
Did you do the drawdown?
I did. Yes, I, I did. Yeah. Hi, Commissioner.
I haven't finished and I'm not, I'm not sure you did. Did you install sheeting, seed it into the clay, make it closed, barrel, and then do the drawdown test? Did you do that?
No.
Financially, that's, that, that's not response, that's not responsive, responsible financially though, Commissioner, and you know that.
I'm, I'm not talking about financials. I'm talking about technicalities here. My question is, you're claiming that you did a drawdown test, right?
I did a drawdown test, yes.
I believe you. And you got a certain extraction from that drawdown test. My point is the drawdown test you've done is done in an open air cooler because you have not inserted sheeting all the way down to the clay. You didn't create a bathtub. You didn't create a container. That's why you got recharged. That's why you got recharged into your construct, into your pit. But if, when you, when you wanna build this building, you're gonna put the sheeting all the way down to the clay or the silt. By doing so, you're gonna have a closed, almost closed system. If you have that, and you turn on your some pumps for two or three days, you can calculate it. Remember our discussion about the porosity of the material there? Calculate how much water you got inside that matrix, that soil matrix? And divide the extraction rate by that. I bet you, two or three days, and it's done. You're not, you do not need the dewatering system to run for 25 days. That's my point. This is what I was screaming about from the beginning, give me a break. But you're, you're like, it's not gonna work that way.
Can we respond to the comment, please? Yeah, there's, there's been a few, um, things that were, were said, Commissioner, and, and thank you. I, I appreciate your comments. Um, first, uh, comment, I believe, was that the test pitting and the, uh, pit drawdown, the pit bale down test was done without the sheeting in place. And you're quite correct, obviously, there was no sheeting in place. But the effective radius of the dewatering around the pit would have never reached the sheeting anyway. Uh, the effective dewatering radius was perhaps 10 or 15 feet. And we know this not only through calculation, but because we looked at a water level in a nearby well. That was about 20, uh, feet or so, plus or minus, away from the, from the pit. So we, we know that we didn't have an effect on that well's water level. So we know that the radius of influence was not going to be to the, uh, edges of the site where the sheeting would have been.
I'm not talking about the radius of influence, Chair, I, I'm sorry. I, I, I don't mean to be rude, but I'm not talking about the radius. I'm talking about this. You have a barrel that has 10 gallons in it. Let's say, you extracted two gallons. And you don't have a chance for the water to get in. Would you anticipate the water to rise?
So, so, well, um, in that case, if I had a perfect bathtub, I would not anticipate the water to rise. But this situation is not that. That's an important point.
It is during construction, during construction, it is.
Commissioner, please allow us to finish our response.
Go ahead.
Please.
Okay. So, so the, um, there's a couple, uh, a couple of ideas here. First, we talked about, uh, we responded to the first comment. And whether the sheeting was in place or not has no bearing on the results of the, of the pit bale down test. Uh, the second idea of whether we have an open system or a closed system. Um, if we have a perimeter of sheeting, we're going to get a leakage rate of 10 to 30% through the sheeting. And we're gonna get some very minimal leakage rate up through the bottom of, of the area that is sheeted. The areas that's surrounded with the sheeting. Um, and I think, I think that's important.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry, can, can, you said you're gonna get a leakage rate of what?
10 to 30% of what would come in, that's a fairly common engineering, uh, number. And I believe we sourced it in the, in the response. But in, in any event, I can get a, uh, I can get a source on that. So you have a, a leakage rate around the entire perimeter of 10 to 30% of what would have come in. And the reason you get that leakage rate is because these are not, it's not a waterproof barrier. These are individual sheets, some three feet wide that are, you know, are, are, are bent and incinerated. They're being driven down, and they're being driven down through a fill. It's approximately eight feet thick. And I've been on site. That fill has, um, has concrete chunks and it has cobblestone boulder-sized material on it. As it's being driven, it will penetrate that material, will break those stones or push them out of the way. But in doing so, it also moves off true. We're gonna have places where there may be utility quarters. I presume we'll cut those off for the most part and, you know, and, and seal them. But there, there are gaps in the sheeting that allow some water through. You cover most of it, but it's not a perfect bathtub. It's like, it's a bathtub with a leaky faucet, is, is what, uh, is what we have here. Now, the other point to make in, in response to Commissioner Sheta's comments is that, um, he's quite correct. Uh, if you had a bathtub, an actual bathtub, where the excavation was excavated down 15 feet below grade everywhere. Um, and you had just a swimming pool or bathtub of standing water, we could remove this water in a very short amount of time. The problem becomes that we have to remove, that we have to lower the water level to 18 feet below grade. And I'll, and I'll answer, um, uh, the chairwoman's and the commissioner's, um, comments about 18 feet that they made at the last, the last session momentarily. But we have to lower the water level throughout the site down to 18 feet below grade. If you have that open area down to 15 feet, it would be very simple to pump the water out. But the thing is this, when you try to pump it from a, from a test pit at a very high rate of, of pumping, you will dewater the test pit, and you will not affect the entire property. So the ground, you have to pull the groundwater out at the rate at which it's flowing into the excavation, into the sump in this case. And, uh, that rate is much slower. And that's why it takes the amount of time it takes, the 25 days. I ran a quick groundwater velocity equation, uh, in between sessions here. If we had, uh, and Commissioner showed, this is primarily, you know, for, for your ears. If we had a hydraulic gradient of one, it would take approximately, uh, 20 to 23 days to get our radius of influence of 26 feet that I would like to achieve with the sumps. If we had a hydraulic gradient of two, because of course around a, a sump, you expect a fairly steep hydraulic gradient. Um, it would take, you know, roughly half that time. The average hydraulic gradient across this whole area from the sump is point two. Is point two. So, um, even with the steeper hydraulic gradients, um, you know, you, you, it takes time to move the water. And we need to move the water, because, uh, there's a couple of things. One is that we, if we don't move the water adequately, we'll come across wet pockets of material throughout the site. We need to drain this water out of there so that we don't hit these, these wet pockets. The 18-foot depth, this is the final part that I have before turning it back over to comments. The 18-foot depth is based on the spread footing foundation and the geotechnical engineer's estimate that we need to pull the water three feet below the bottom of those spread footings. And so, uh, if the bottom is at 15 feet, we need to reach, um, 18 feet. And so that's the basis for it. And I do believe we, we spelled that out in the response to comments. But in any event, it was part of the calculations. Um, yeah, I think I should stop there, um, with respect to this comment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanna show a picture, please.
Mm-hmm.
Can, can you stop your screen sharing?
Yeah, I can one second, sorry.
Sure. Thank you.
Yep.
Do you see this?
Mm-hmm.
This is sheet pile system inside a river.
Mm-hmm.
There is no 30% leakage, water is not flowing in. Sheet piles used because they are watertight. There is something called cow choke seal or rubber seal that could be placed in the joints between the sheets to make them watertight. We build cutouts, environmental cutouts on daily basis in the city and outside, and they are watertight. Sheet pile wall is a watertight system. The only inflows coming from the bottom. The maximum number of days that need to be like, put your dewatering system on is three days, period. And I know what I'm talking about. And, 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 you know what? To come back after three hearings and claim that high water table is a uniqueness on this site is, is odd, simply.
Okay, I, I, so, I, I just, I just need to say, we, you exceeded the 10 minutes, I gave you 20, okay? And, um, what I would like to do is, you heard the comments from everyone. You heard Commissioner Sheta's follow-up comments. Um, can you please put all of your responses to these comments in writing in a concise document? And, um, please, a concise document that's easy to follow, um, with no hyperlinks, because obviously we have trouble with the hyperlinks. Um, and, and submit that, because, um, I, we can't have this keep going on. We've been at this hearing too many times. And each time, um, we whittle at, down, uh, different, we whittle down the amount of money that's reflected in the remediation. Therefore, whittling down what is apparently the scope of the waiver. Um, and so, and, and it's not coordinated, um, with the scope of the ask. So the, the, uh, the amount of remediation goes down, and the ask went down a little bit, but it doesn't go down commensurate with the amount of remediation and so on. And that's what's been going on and on and on. So either, um, maybe, you know, one idea is to go back to your drawing board and reapply with something that's much more consistent with these, these facts. But at the moment, I think the board is already in the moment of incredulity as it's stated collectively. Maybe your next submission, which by the way, is your last submission, because I'm gonna close this, um, will be the one that persuades the board that maybe there's a little bit of room. But you're not hearing two times the FAR in that, in that little bit of room. And so that's part of the, the other part of the problem. So, um, so that, that's what I would like to do. And I'm gonna go to the public now. I see Commissioner Sheta's hand up, but we need to go to the public, in case there is public. And, um, and then wrap this up with a, with a clean submission, okay? And Mr., go ahead, Tony.
The case we're currently discussing is 2019, 25 B.C., 40-48 Commercial Street, Brooklyn. Zoom webinar ID number is 914-6027-6925. And if you wanna call in, it's 646-558-8656. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand.
Okay, and, um, I just wanna say, Mr. Williams, as you know, we respect your work very much. Um, you appear very often before this agency. You do do an excellent job. And I did read that memo, but I will read it again. Um, and understanding that I was supposed to be using hyperlinks that in my case did not work, I review this on a Mac. And so Macs don't necessarily agree with PC hyperlinks.
Yeah, I mean, just, Chair, just, just focus on the first part of the memo. And if you have any questions on the backup. I mean, I, I, and the reason why I'm so upset is like, I really felt like we tried to work with the concepts that Commissioner Sheta brought forward. And we really, you know, listened to him and responded. And, you know, yes, there were some adjustments, but they're relatively modest. And so now we're down to a few questions about the dewatering again. And I would just, I would just say, you know, Commissioner is a very experienced engineer and, and has his opinions and his thoughts on this matter. And we have a team here that about basically 60 years of experience in this field uh, with these types of projects. And I feel like we're getting a, in a, in a, you know, he said, he said contest here. And there's no arbiter. Um, and my concern is, we're not given a chance to properly, you know, honestly, Commissioner Sheta, I, I believe honestly, if I, if we could get you in the room with Jeff and Peter and actually talk this out, we would not have to come back to the board and we have a few minutes to respond to your, to what are very technical comments. And so if there's any way to facilitate that, I think we could save the board a whole bunch of problems. Because what's happening here is you have an expert on the board who is rebutting, we do not agree. You know, we do not, you know, we do not see things as simply as he does. And so this is what's creating the friction and being responsive. So that, I just wanted to say that.
Yes, I, I appreciate that. But even if we were all meeting in person, it would be exactly the same situation as you may remember, right? And, oh, someone has graphic, um, please mute, okay? So that's where the written responses are supposed to be responding to the incredulity that's expressed by the experts on the board. And in the end, of course, it's the board that makes the decisions, you know, to, uh, we're ultimately the deciders. And if we don't agree with the argument that's made, that's what carries. That's just the way it is, right?
Fair enough, Chair.
Would there be an arbiter? I don't know. That would be like the board of the board of the board of the standard.
I'm just saying, this is a particularly unique area where you have somebody with very deep experience on the geotechnical side. And, and there are, you know, the fact is, there are so many risk factors associated. But the, we didn't even put this in that like, could blow our estimates up twice, three times of, if more hazardous materials, and we didn't even include that. That's why this is very frustrating, is we're, we're acting like this is precision masquerading as accuracy. You know, we're doing the best we can, but I, I'm not gonna belabor this anymore. I know you gotta get, we all shared a late night last night. And I, you know, it's, 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 you guys have a tough job, we do as well, and we hear you.
Okay, so thank you. So, um, I don't think there was anyone who called in. Um, no one in the waiting room had, please raise your Zoom hand if you would like to speak on this application. Otherwise, um, how much time do you need to submit a response that is as concise and addresses this concern that Commissioner Sheta had about other numbers changing, right? Um, so we're trying to not have that moving target where we describe it as wacko-mole, we bring one down and the other one comes up. And so all of those kinds of questions need to be answered. And then this question about litigation, um, also needs to be answered because you're hearing expressly from Commissioner Ottley Brown the concern about the New Heart litigation and that maybe this is a premature application, right? Yes, go ahead.
This is Peter, I, I think we had, uh, said this in Richard's initial comments is that there is no litigation, right? The client has not litigated, he has not sued anybody.
I know currently, but perhaps it's because obviously there's a lot going on with that New Heart site. And there may be something in the offering. Um, you know, for instance, I know about sort of bankruptcy decisions where finally there's money that's made available to all the injured parties in an environmental case. There's, there's situations like that, so how do we?
What are you doing, what are you doing in the case of a, of a, you know, a, a applicant that comes forward? And there's no litigation involved, and you approve that project. And then 10 years later, he decides to, to put a suit in against somebody who he believes brought contamination onto his property. You know, it seems, it seems to me that, you, you know, you, you're, you're looking into a crystal ball and saying that this client or this applicant has the ability to go back and sue these people. He has no intent of suing these people.
Well, okay, right, we don't know that he has no intent to sue it.
But what does that have to do with this applicant, though? I don't understand.
Wait, wait, can I say something?
Yeah.
There still exists the possibility that he could be made whole in other ways or made partially whole. And that's what's making it difficult for me to determine what the, the, uh, minimal variance is. And that's what the problematic issue is.
Commissioner Ottley Brown, we actually did provide a preliminary response in our memorandum. It's, it's actually in there. And then Richard, I'm, I'm gonna let you go, because Richard's gonna follow up on this.
Right, but the bottom line is, to be honest, I'm not convinced. And just like your other, um, consultant just said, what's to stop him from, in the future, trying to gain redress from someone else? There is nothing to stop. So even if he put his hand up today and said he swore.
Commissioner Ottley Brown, there, there, there is. And, and it's outlined in the memorandum. But we will follow that up with a very specific targeted response to address your concern.
As well as the concern about the Brownsfield that I said, which is why isn't he pursuing a Brownsfield cleanup cost um, recuperation? And if so, to include it in the financials. Otherwise, it really is gonna make me difficult, uh, make it difficult for me to analyze.
Commissioner Ottley Brown, again, the response to that specific question is provided in our memorandum of response.
Right, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not reading your 2,500-page or your 25-page memorandum. You have a statement of facts and findings. Statement of facts and findings is supposed to tie together the main points of your argument. This isn't an intricate, little, out-of-the-way kind of very specific issue. This is a very major point for making your A case, your B, and your E. And so therefore, it should be in your statement of facts and findings. To think that we sit here for two weeks with nothing better to do than to read the voluminous paper that you guys have been submitting after a year and a half of this, without even being able to securely get to the bottom of it? I, I don't think that's being very reasonable on your part. And then to sit there, and I'm very calmly sitting and listening to you parade around how outraged you are and attacking the commissioners, that's not very helpful for your case either. So now that you're putting forth and you're saying, well, you have to read this section of this section of this section of this other document? No, it's not happening. Put it in the statement of facts and findings, which is long enough as it is, and I will read it for probably the fifth or sixth time. But I have other cases to deal with as well. And frankly, this is how I feel about it. If you truly have a hardship, you could get it across in one or two hearings, not five, not a year and a half.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Chair, please, please.
Okay, now I need to
I wanna put something, I wanna put something on the record, please, regarding the litigation. Regardless, whether they go for a litigation or not, I don't believe that they do have a significant hardship on this application. So I don't care whether they're gonna go to a litigation or not and what they said in the memorandum. And what they said in the memorandum, that I read it in its entirety, that they said it's not guaranteed if they go a, uh, the litigation route, that they're gonna get something. So we did read it. I don't buy the argument regarding the litigation, whether it's not guaranteed or guaranteed. And even if they just put this aside at all, I don't think they do have a hardship. And I don't think my position on this is gonna change.
And we don't get to respond to that.
Okay. No, 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 please. We can't go on anymore with this. Um, our counsel has his hand up. Kirk, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to make a quick comment, um, in response to Mr. Lobel's statement about ripeness. Um, I would note that the board is evaluating the credibility of the, um, evidence and the record that's been submitted. And so I'm not sure that that line of cases is going to be particularly helpful in making your arguments, especially since obviously you have D O B objections and you currently would like to construct this building. But, um, obviously you can respond as you see fit.
That, well, my discreet answer to that would be to ask, what line of cases would I be reviewing to see whether or not a, a potential alternative litigation would preclude the board from granting variance relief?
I would say that you would probably wanna look into the standards applicable to substantial evidence, since that's what's required to make the findings. And you've heard from the board that, um, the evidence that's been submitted, um, at best seems pretty speculative, given the, um, feasibility of alternative, um, uh, compensation.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I think it's probably substantial evidence of what that we're seeking. So.
Right. And so the.
Is, is right, but again, we'll, we'll brief.
Point I'm making is that, um, it does not seem that the board has, um, found the evidence that you've submitted credible. Um, and so the procedural aspects about ripeness is something that you can look into. I don't think it'll be very helpful.
Okay. I mean, the, the only reason that I bring that up is because that was the term that was used in the executive session. But to the extent, we're, we're happy to fully, uh, further review whether or not a, a method of alternative litigation precludes, uh, a zoning board from granting variance relief. I don't think there's anything out there, but again, we're happy to look.
I would also note that I think preclude is just the wrong word because the board is evaluating the credibility and not finding credible the assertions that you're making.
Right. And I add that, for instance, there's two soil borings. Why weren't there more? Because a lot of this is relying on two soil borings and saying, we don't know what's going on in that other portion. And so in another case, we determined that the case was premature because they hadn't done their, um, their homework fully on the site, um, by conducting additional boring. So I think maybe that's another element in there. So now I'm, we're gonna move on. So what I would like to do, because it's the last chance to persuade this board with concisely, um, provided materials of not more than a total of twenty-five pages for all the materials. Not more than twenty-five, all the materials, including exhibits. So you gotta be really concise, um, twenty-five pages submitted in response to, um, open questions. And then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair, may we just, may we just say that this is unfairly prejudicing the applicant? And we can point to hundreds of other.
Mr. Lobel, please don't do this to me. This has been going on already for almost an hour when I.
I need to say that on the record. You're asking us to limit our submission to twenty-five pages.
Motion to close, Mr. Lobel. And motion to close.
Wait, wait, wait. How much time do you need to submit your twenty-five page? It's not unfairly prejudicing. We've had how many case hearings, Commissioner Ottley Brown? Five?
Our statement of facts alone would, would be twenty-five pages. Our statement of facts alone would go to twenty-five pages.
Since October twenty nineteen.
So you're not being prejudiced. We've had five hearings already and your statement of facts does not need to be twenty-five pages. Your entire submission will include all the critical materials and you're not gonna give us yet another statement of fact that repeats whatever was stated, all right?
Thank you for clarifying that, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't, twenty-five pages for everybody, all consultants, everybody together in one concise document, okay? So motion, how much time do you need to prepare that?
I'd ask Kevin and Peter to, to respond and Jeff to respond with regards to the environmental, because that's gonna lead the way.
I, I, I leave it up to them. I, I really have no idea at this point.
Peter, Jeff?
I'd say thirty days, Kevin.
Okay. Thirty days, Chair.
Okay, great. So a motion to close.
Chair Promata.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown. Commissioner Ashetta.
Aye.
Commissioner Asha Betta.
Aye.
The application is closed.
Okay. So we need to thank you, everyone, for calling in. Um, so we need to move to the two P M. session, uh, for the la, for the next hearing because we're about to lose our site.
Okay, so bounce out?
Yeah. So let's tell everybody, the people who are coming to the next one, call the next case.
Twenty, item twenty-six, twenty nineteen, two sixty-three B C, twenty-one, twenty-two, Richmond Avenue, Staten Island. Already had notified them.
Okay. Oh, you did. Okay. So.
Here's the Zoom webinar number.
Right. So for people who are interested in following this case or participating in this case that was just called on Richmond Avenue, we're gonna have to leave this webinar and go to the next webinar. So the call-in number is the same, six four six five five eight eight six five six. But the webinar ID is different, nine nine eight two seven eight zero one two seven four. And you can also go to our website and click on the link for the two P M. February ninth session. Okay. So everybody get off this one and sign on to the next one. We'll, um, and then we'll take, I think we'll take a break. I'm not sure exactly. Okay. Thanks. Okay.